Okay, so. Everybody ready on the internet?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, Savino.
Yes.
Okay.
And this is Foster.
Okay. I have a call to order, and so now we'll have a roll call, please.
Counselor Hildebrand.
President.
Counselor Oropesa.
Here.
Counselor Perry.
Here.
Counselor Corn.
Here.
Counselor Moore. Counselor Halverson. Counselor Halverson, can you hear us?
Maybe she'd answer better to Granny.
Counselor Sanchez.
Hello.
Counselor Foster. Counselor Foster.
Here.
Counselor Best.
Here.
Counselor Arnold.
Present.
Counselor Halverson, can you hear us?
You have a quorum, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So if we'll have, we'll rise for the pledge by Councilman Hildebrand and the prayer by Counsel Lady Moore.
Dear God, we just thank you for this day, God. We thank you, Father, for each and every one of us to be here today, God. By the God, I ask that you look upon us as we gather to do the work for the city, God. In the name of Jesus, God, I ask you that you watch over our minds and our hearts and our understanding, God, as we make these decisions, God, for our constituents. Father God, I ask that you bless those in the military, God, those that are serving you wherever they might be. Keep them safe from all hurt, harm, and danger. Continue to watch over and keep the city in the name of Jesus. We pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, uh, thank you, Counselors. Counsel Lady, uh, Moore, we're glad to have you back, and it's, I know you've been through a lot of trying times, and our thoughts and prayers are with you and your family.
Thank you, sir.
So, okay, so. Okay. So, now, so we have the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, we will be amending the agenda tonight by pulling fifteen and sixteen off the consent agenda. They will be moved under new business, and the record will reflect them as fifteen, sixteen, and carrying on with item twenty-nine on the agenda. Under public hearings, number five, zoning case twenty-three dash zero zero three Z O C will be removed from the agenda as the planning and zoning committee has not completed proper procedure to allow for this hearing. Mr. Eintum, if you can follow up to ensure that planning and zoning complete procedure to allow for this zoning case to be presented at a future council meeting. Council members, other than the amendments noted, are there any additional amendments to the agenda or amendments to be made?
Counselman.
Just wait.
Any further?
Go ahead.
Okay.
So seeing none, I would like to make a motion to accept the agenda with amendments. Consent agenda items fifteen and sixteen will be removed and added under new business at fifteen, sixteen, and then carrying on with item number twenty-nine. Public hearing number five, zoning case twenty-three dash zero zero three Z O C to be pulled until further notice.
We have a motion by Counsel Lady Arnold. Is there a second? I think Counsel, Counsel Lady Moore, I heard you first. So we have any discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Hildenbrand.
Sorry.
Counselor Oropesa.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Aye.
Counselor Corn. Counselor Moore.
Yes.
Counselor Halverson, are you online?
Yes, I am. Yes, as my vote.
For the record, Counselor Halverson joined us at six oh six. Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Best.
Yes.
Counselor Arnold.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay. Next, we have. Approval of the consent agenda. We have, uh, we've always asked to have approval of the consent agenda. Counsel Lady Arnold, would you like to make a motion? I understand you've stated it all, but we can approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion approving the consent agenda for June eighth, two thousand and twenty-three for the regular city council meeting as amended.
Yeah, we motion to approve the consent agenda with the items, uh, item five removed and items fifteen and sixteen moved down into new business. Is there a second? Councilman, uh, motion by Councilman Arnold and a second by Counsel Lady, or Councilman Hiddle, Hildebrand, I'm sorry, Hildenbrand, so, um, if the clerk could call a roll.
Counselor Hildenbrand.
Aye.
Counselor Oropesa.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Aye.
Counselor Corn.
Yes.
Counselor Moore.
Yes.
Counselor Halverson.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Best.
Yes, with a statement.
Thank you. Counselor Arnold.
Yes.
Thank you, by vote. Ten in the infirmity, none in the negativity, consent agenda's been approved. Counsel Lady, uh, Corn Best.
Yes, I've had some constituents call me and seem to be concerned about a Roswell lease out at the airport, number fourteen. I did a little investigation, and our Badland Saints quote-unquote is their name. They have no police record in their vicinity, so I want the public to understand this has been a well-decided situation, so they followed the rulebook to get out there. They're going to pay their lease. There is no back-law-breaking-whatever that the city and the public seem to think there is, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lady. And, uh, okay, next we have on, uh, non-action items, we have a report from Mike Espiritu from the Airport Advisory Commission.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Counselors. Mike Espiritu, I'm the Vice Chairman of the Airport Advisory Commission. Mr. Kunkel, Chairman, is out of town on vacation with family. Just a couple highlights from this last meeting we had this past week. I think one of the most significant areas was the contractor that, uh, the company that came out to do lighting maintenance surveying and engineering of our airfield. And the biggest takeaway that I want to share with you of his, of his presentation is we have a significant concern with the electrical infrastructure out of the Air Center that could impact our one-three-and-one operations, which is our, our air service to other areas, to Dallas and so forth. There is a plan in place, uh, that obviously will require some funding, but it's an area that will take, uh, take probably through legal to take a real good look on how we want to move forward. I suspect we'll have to do some work with the backbone infrastructure, tie that into possible projects in the future. It'll require some maintenance, but tied into replacing signage, maybe move into LED light projects to, to reduce the cost of that system. It's an old system. It's an old airbase, and I believe, as one person said at the meeting, that don't know that anything's ever been done to those systems out of the airfield. That's a big concern I want to share with you. The passenger parking lot is moving along, uh, they, uh, you know, it's, it's full most days, if you've been out there. The estimated completion date is August, September, depending on weather. Certainly a need for, uh, for the people that live here in this surrounding region. As you may recall, the, uh, there was a RFP for a strategic plan for the Air Center. It was conducted, um, it was, uh, they had three bidders, a company was selected, and that would be, they recommended to go to legal for their review and possibly up here to the council for possible, uh, work to fund. The, uh, it was also in the paper this morning, if you read that, it's mentioned the company, and it was Meeden Hunt, which is an aviation, they're actually a bigger company than just aviation, but they have a very large aviation history with over, I believe it's a hundred and seventy-five years combined experience in that area, so they're very experienced. A company that also does our air service work to help maintain and, and maintain and, and forecast with you, with airlines, new service routes for Roswell, so it's a, it's good to have that partnership in the plan because they understand Roswell. The waterline infrastructure project is moving along. I understand it's ninety-nine percent complete, uh, very happy to, to hear that. You're to the southeast side, uh, I think, uh, the, your engineering department has done a lot of work on that, and we appreciate how that's moving along. Very important for the infrastructure buildout to that portion of the Air Center. The, I, I want to go back to that critical infrastructure for that lighting, and I want to share with you the price structure they gave us, um, and I'm, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but they're, I, I think it's close to three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we're not sure because of the cost of parts, uh, but there is, it's a two-phase program where it's the initial phase to replace some things, uh, but also then a, a ongoing maintenance piece, so it's probably going to be a little bit more than that. Well, that concludes my, uh, my report from the commission. I promised to keep that brief. I've seen your agenda, it's very long, those are just the highlights. We did, of course, talk a number of things, uh, but I do stand for your questions or your comments or concerns.
Are there any questions of Mr. Espiritu? Counsel Lady.
So my question, I think, is about Red Mountain Arsenal. Um, are they still going strong? Are we to that, or is that in your other report?
Uh, no, ma'am, it's neither report, but I may address it. Mr. Mayor, Counselor Best, uh, Red Mountain Arsenal is still going strong. Uh, they, uh, we did work with them to receive a J-Tip application so they can hire more folks, gets more trained reimbursement dollars. They're awarded the full amount. I just don't have the number with me. Uh, they have some, some labor challenges, some workforce challenges. Uh, they have near, when I spoke to them last, about a month ago, they had secured some contracts in the Middle East, and they were pretty anxious on moving that forward, um, significant contracts. So I think that they're doing better. I think that they, their only issue is, is they have insufficient, they do not have sufficient workforce to, to really move the products as quick as they would like. We've, we've helped them, uh, we've helped them with hiring events and things of that nature, uh, but I believe that they're fine. I understand, I've told, I speak with the company, you know, at least once a month, and they appear to be doing okay.
Can you refresh my memory when they opened? I can't seem to remember that, and then how many employees they have at this point?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Best, I, that would happen before my time in Roswell, so I want to, I believe it was around twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, um, and then initially they had just like four people, and I think they're up to about twelve currently.
Okay, thank you very much.
I think they would like, Mr. Mayor, Counselor, they think they would really, they're really moving towards to the eighteen to twenty-plus number of employees. It's just a matter of finding people that will, that have the aptitude to do that type of work, because it's, uh, as you know, it's a very controlled environment because they're dealing with, uh, with, with munitions and, and what have you, uh, but, so they have to be very selective on who they hire, so the requirements are, are a little more stringent than some places.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any further comment? I just might point out one of, a couple of things out there. One of the problems at the Air Center is that a lot of the lighting that is in there is, was done in the fifties and sixties, forties, fifties and sixties, and a lot of the wiring is just old, and they, it has some, uh, problems on how well it transmits electricity across it, so there are some issues with that, and, uh, they seem to think that it was really, it was repairable, and, and then comes in the biggest, one of the biggest problems they have is that the lights on the runway and all the lights there are incandescent bulbs, and you can't buy incandescent bulbs anymore, and so that's, you know, that creates a necessity for us to do something a lot quicker. The nice thing about that is that we, when we do that, the LED bulbs, uh, that they have use so much less electricity, it will help us an awful lot on operating costs, which are very, uh, should be very helpful, and, um, a lot of people don't know, but there's different levels of lighting that they have to use on their runway lights and things, different levels of brightness that they have to use, and, uh, with the older wire, it's very difficult to maintain the proper levels of lighting you have in different, uh, in different, uh, cloudy situations at, at the airport, and so that's some of the things they have that, uh, should be a, a big help to us, that you have to maintain different levels of, uh, different levels of brightness, depending on the, the type of, uh, weather that you're having. And probably the biggest thing to note out there is the old red and white water tower is gone. That's been there for, forever and ever, as long as I've been here, so as long as I can remember that water tower forever, and, uh, so that's gone out there. We have two other towers there, but, uh, and those, but you'll get those two other towers, you'll get those on your tax bill pretty quick, so you're going to remember those. But thank you, Mr. Espiritu, for, for, would you like to give us your economic report now?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, Counselors, uh, uh, my name didn't change, it's still Espiritu. I'm like, uh, sorry, sorry, sorry joke, on the agenda, my name is a little bit different, but I'm still the same person. Thank you. What, which? Thank you. Okay, well, again, good evening. Who are we? I think you know who we are. We're a twenty-five-member board, uh, we're a public-private partnership with you and the, and the county. We're a five-one-C-three, we maintain that relationship, obviously, with IRS. Uh, we have eight ex officios, and they are primarily our, all our school superintendents throughout Chavas County, uh, the university president, Sean Powell, uh, and our representatives from our field delegation that, that support our, our federal lawmakers. And of course, we have a staff of three, and myself and, and Cisco Brink, who's a project manager, and also Tiffany Salsito, who is new to us by about two weeks, maybe two and a half weeks, and she's our new business development director, and what she does is gets out and speaks and helps local businesses stay in business and hopefully expand and grow. Well, as you know, the EDC has, has a lot on their plate, but the thing that drives us the most is our beliefs and our culture and our vision, and, and where we're headed as an organization. The best support, Roswell-Chavas County, uh, we believe that we are the, the source for economic development, we are the key agency, and we get a lot of referrals, and we have a lot of projects, as many of you know, uh, but we do lead with integrity, you know, we, we are honest with people, uh, but we find solutions, and I think that's really important. In today's environment, uh, there's a lot of challenges out there, from workforce to financing and so forth, but I'll tell you, we've got to continue to be part of the team with you and with the county to provide the, uh, the moral courage to keep moving forward our community for the good of the people that live here. Our top priorities, um, and I used to say we have a three-legged stool, and this is actually four legs, so it's not that I can't count, it's because we, the top three are these right here, business traction and recruitment, business retention, expansion, workforce development. Supporting our community grow in other ways is also very important, and I think if anyone knows that better than you, because it's hard to attract a company if we don't have a great community for people that want to be here. So we are involved with many other facets of Roswell besides those top three areas. Those are our top three big areas, but we support you and the city and every, every aspect, how we can create a better quality of, not necessarily life, but a quality of place, so we can be attractive, to recruit people to, to come here for their consideration. So in our attraction and recruitment efforts, our role is to, obviously, to assist in new high-wage job creation, um, support new capital investment, and what does that all do? It creates great GRT for our community and creates new jobs. Our primary target markets, uh, very important, is obviously aerospace, aviation, defense, and frankly, my time is spent, I would say, most days in the Air Center and where we are headed in aviation sector. That is our largest and best, uh, use of our time. Of course, Roswell was founded on agriculture. We have, we have La Prino, we have the dairies, we have a lot of farmers, we have a lot of ranchers, and we support them and their activities, and hopefully, uh, we can move towards other value-added agriculture-type, uh, companies. And of course, any manufacturing like, like Red Mountain Arsenal, and of course, uh, again, we support manufacturing, obviously, but again, if it's tied to aviation in particular, then we really want to attract those type of companies because they pay well. So how do we do that? Trade shows, uh, expos, conferences, uh, site selection event, site selection events, which are consultants that are helping make decisions and pushing locations to companies for their consideration. It's a pretty big deal to get on the radar of a consultant that thinks about Roswell as a place for recommendation to a client. And of course, we do our own lead generation, you know, we, we, although we have site selection events, we do work with the New Mexico Partnership, uh, they periodically, several times a month, provide proposals for companies that are looking for locations, uh, we also, and we submit an RFP or respond to RFPs for that, but we also have a, a funded service that we use called GSLI, and that is like that, but even better. So it's all about generating more leads, more opportunity, which hopefully will convert to projects, and of course, the many that we do as a result of those trade shows and events that, that I attend. Project development is a big part of the next step. If we're able to attract a company, and if we can get them to Roswell, which is a pretty big deal, if they've come to Roswell, that means they're, they're interested. They're not just fishing, but they're interested. But what does that take? If, obviously, we have to know what we have, we have to know what our real estate is, we have to know about zoning and planning and permitting, we get involved with business plans and financial perfor, perfor, perforas, and financing options and incentives that the companies all need. We have to talk about workforce. You know, it used to be, it used to be, tell me about your incentives, but now it's tell me about your workforce. That's why we spend a lot of time in that arena, in career tech education, not only with the Roswell Independent School District, but the other three districts in Chavas County. We perform a lot of due diligence and a lot of research on companies, because that's not always, sadly, what it appears. We have to make sure that we are spending not only time or recommending to you for consideration, a company that is truly viable, and then we submit the proposals. These proposals, they take hours to prepare, and we do several, several a month, and, uh, the research involved and the questions that we have to answer is extremely extensive. And of course, after we submit them, we, we need to follow up, you know, what happened to the proposal? Did the company go to another state? Why did it go someplace else, and then why not Roswell? Well, this year, as I mentioned, those three, global site locations, the GSLI, the partnership, our local lead generation, those words down below are just, are most of the projects we submitted on this past year. As you see, there's a lot of them. And again, they take a lot of energy. I don't want to talk about everyone, we'll be talking for the next five hours and we don't want to do that. Well, how did we do? Well, we submitted fifty-eight projects, proposals. We've had three, in actuality, we've had four company visits, we've had one just this week. We've had a project locate and a second one that's in works to locate here. The one near the finish line could be a very large job creation project. But as you know, economic development is not a short game, it's a long game. It takes a lot of time to work through the, through with the company for their site selection and all the things that they need to be successful for consideration before we ever get to the point of they're here on the ground and we're digging dirt. But the most important thing about creating projects is it creates new jobs and it creates great capital investment and provides other types of opportunities and other type of capabilities and resources back to our community in like, like construction, for example, or financial services, or any type of support services. All the bleed-off industries that are impacted by the company that's deciding to be here. As I mentioned, our second priority is business retention, expansion, or BRNE. And the whole intent of the program is to support and assist people and companies and businesses that have already invested in Roswell-Chavas County. They're already here. And how can we keep them here? How can we help them grow? And how, how can we help them create new and more jobs? So we get out there, we visit these, all these local businesses, identifying concerns, problem areas. Sometimes they need access to financing. We find them their resources and link them to those, those, those areas like financing. We also look for trends. You know, what are they saying out there they're having most problems with? You know, what's that itch they can't scratch? And if we're seeing that same itch happen in multiple businesses, especially in different industries, that tells you we have an area that we have to start working towards and that's what we do. We'll take that on, work with the proper agencies and try to find them some resolution. We also do incentive analysis for them, for their expansion. We, again, connect them to resources, help them create those new jobs. And one of the most important things that we do is we are not lobbyists, but we are advocates for the, for business legislation that may be impacting them negatively or positively that we can be a part of. As you know, this past January, we held our legislative reception in Santa Fe. We had a very good attendance and we also worked on some bills, we actually advocated for some. One thing that we always work towards is those incentives at the state level that we use to attract companies like LITA and J-TIP and things of that nature. And as you're aware, we have a facade grant program and we have one that we're trying to complete right now. And I'm not sure where they're headed, but I know they're having some challenges because of the cost of materials. So we'll see how that turns out, but we hopefully, we can continue to do more of those in the future. So our goals this past year is to visit about forty businesses a month. You know, I met, I met a Director of Economic Development in another community in, in New Mexico, and I won't say who it was. And we were comparing notes on BRE programs and she said to me, how many businesses do you guys, your company, look at or go visit every month? I said, our goal is forty. She goes, we only do two a week. Well, I says, two a week, that's eight businesses you're touching a month. You know, we have a lot of businesses in Roswell. Granted, they're not as large as Roswell, but they're not that small either. And I thought at first, well, maybe we're trying to do too much. But I said, you know what? We're not. People need help. And a good example of that is what we did during COVID, reaching out to all the businesses, the restaurants that really needed help. That's what I believe our role is, to help, help keep those people in business, help keep those jobs. Because that investment people made years ago or recently is a pretty big deal. Well, we conduct a survey, we, we manage that data, we identify trends, as I mentioned earlier, we conduct follow-up. And obviously, we'll assist in the creation of new jobs and we'll support them through incentives through the state. So how did we do? Well, this year, we visited over four hundred businesses. Now, we would have hit four hundred and eighty, I think we're pretty closer to over four hundred. And the reason we didn't is because we've had some staffing changes and the person that had doing that left, so we didn't have anyone to do that function. But I believe we can still hit that mark. These companies listed, you know who they are. You know, total, in total, they were awarded for eighty-four jobs, over seven hundred thousand dollars in training money. That's a big deal. Companies have to train people, but to get the reimbursement back from the state to, for the training cost, because as you know, in business, it costs to train people, it costs to train your workforce. So we're able to do this with these companies. We testify with each of these companies before the state board. Everyone that we've worked on here in, in Roswell-Chavas County has received every single dime that they requested. Now, this is BRNE, this is an incentive, there's a lot of other jobs you created, but I wanted to show you this because this data is already out there in the public. And it's good stuff for the people here in Roswell because these are pretty good wage, pretty good wage jobs. Workforce development, as you know, we've had job fairs and higher events and thankful to your partnership, we were able to do those right here in our convention center. And, and have events where people can find jobs. There's a lot of other job events that have happened around Roswell, which is good, and I think we will continue to help support those. I'm not sure we'll actually do any, too many more of those, but we will support those and find ways to get people into the workforce. We are also, it's on the slide, but we're also very closely connected with our Department of Workforce Solutions, their, their office out at the Eastern's campus. And why is that? Because, in fact, just attended a meeting yesterday, how can we continue to find ways to find people and get them employed? But we need to grow our workforce and we understand that. And that's why we're so involved with career tech education, because if we don't grow our local workforce, it's tough to get people to move anywhere. But they have, but I believe that people that are from Roswell, young people that are here, that, that have a job or they have the skills and talent, they're gonna stay here and be great citizens for our community. You know, folks that we try to import in from, from Pick-a-Place may not stay very long because they're not from here, their family's not here. So we want to grow our local workforce and work with our public schools to find ways for young people to have opportunity. And we do that through apprenticeship programs and job shadowing and things of that nature, get kids linked to industry and truly understand why, why a carpenter needs to have math skills, for example, and so on. So they can apply those, those, those knowledges to a future career. We also have business and leadership seminars, we do one once a quarter to help our local business people. We just did one this week and it was on marketing and social media, well-attended. And I'm, I would suspect that our local people, business people appreciated that. And we do this at very low cost, that's because we, we turn the money around, we just, we just buy them food and, you know, it's really, it's, to me, it's a, it's a wash. So how did we do? We, we spent a lot of time in all the schools. We were just in Goddard, we've been to Roswell High School and all these you see here on the, on the board. We do work with NIMI and work with General Griswold and his team and educate young people. Because not everyone, as you know, it's a junior college, not every one of those young people are going in the military. So we want to get, help them transform to, to some type of employment and hopefully right here in our, our community. One of the most, most important aspects of what we do when it comes to developing workforce is to link industry partners with education, educational community and the students. If young people understand what the needs are by a local businessperson, what the skills are required, and more importantly, that the educators know what needs to be taught in the, in the classroom, then, then the industry will benefit. The kids will benefit, if you will, the students, because they all understand it more, right? If you, in my opinion, if you try to educate young people in a certain pathway, and that's not what business wants, we're probably doing everyone a disservice. So I think the forums we've had, and we had one with Roswell High, in fact, it was early college, high school at our, at our building with those students, their aviation folks, young students. And they came and did presentations to industry, our local industry partners in aerospace. And they gave feedback to the young people and to the educational communities, this is what we're looking for, this is what we need. And I thought it was very beneficial, we'll continue to do that. I mentioned about the job fairs, we did three, excuse me, we sport and assisted three career events at the high schools. And we did four, we had four, no kidding, four business seminars this, this past year. Well, looking ahead, plan of action, it's all about creating jobs for us. It's about marketing our community, coaching people about Roswell. You know, I've traveled quite a bit and I think since I've been in this job for almost four years now, I've only ran into two people that have not heard of Roswell. And they weren't from the United States. So it's a great icebreaker for me as a salesman of Roswell to coach people that we are more than just about aliens, we're about business. And these are the reasons why, and this is what makes us so special. And we advertise in the, in trade publication, industry trade publications, media, magazines. Those are a list of some of the trade shows that I, I've attended and I will continue to attend. And as you can see, the majority of those are geared towards aviation and that's supporting business at our Air Center. When I returned, we submit proposals, you know, follow up with these contacts. At one of them, which was Select USA, which is near the bottom, I met a Romanian company who wants to look at drone development in the United States. So we've already established a relationship, we follow up, I'm waiting on their funding because at the end of the day, it's all about funding, right? So we're working through that process. Those are important because that's how we generate more activity, more leads to bring in more opportunity to this area. We'll submit more leads, all eligible proposals, and I say eligible because there's some proposals that require you to be on an interstate highway. Well, we're not on an interstate highway, but we are on a state highway and we have great highway systems. But if they have to be with, on a state, I mean, on an interstate highway, for example, then of course they won't qualify. Now, does that mean we just ignore that? No, we take a very hard look at how we can move the needle where we could qualify because we want to put, it's, it's kind of like fishing, we want to put everything out there we can to create great opportunity for us. So that's really important. And again, we've submitted quite a few last year, I'm sure we'll do quite a few more this year. And of course, we support our local developers with any retail things. And I can't speak about a lot of those, but we have, we have and we will. But that's not our primary area because they don't, they don't traditionally pay the high wages that we like to see in industrial jobs. But we do support those businesses because they are part of that community development piece I spoke of earlier. On our business recruitment, here's our plan of action, our goals, identify two potential projects quarterly. And projects are different than leads. Leads are, are just talk to somebody, they may have an interest, we'll send them information, we'll follow up. But projects are, 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 are events where they could lead to an actual location right here in our community. Have two site visits. And I said, a site visit is important, if they're gonna take the time to come to Roswell and fly in here and visit with us, that means there's interest and that's good. Locate at least two projects every year and assist companies to create these high-wage jobs and capital investment in our community. In our BRNE side, we will still plan, we still plan to contact forty countywide businesses throughout the year, every month. And we'll identify those trends, as I mentioned earlier, find and identify solutions and find out those solutions together with the departments, not only the city, but the county and, and local business as it applies, so they can be successful. We'll support and assist companies, excuse me, for J-TIP requests with the state board. And again, I will testify or one of us will, usually it's me, with the state board for those requests at every, every turn. On the workforce development side, we will be, again, continue our work with career tech education, the university, which we have a very, very strong partnership. As an example, this past Tuesday at the site visit, Dr. Powell himself was there, as he traditionally is. And we're gonna be able to talk about the workforce developmental piece that they can use at the university to help companies create the workforce pipeline they'll need to be successful in Roswell. That's a really important part of what we do. And we're fortunate to have Dr. Powell and his great team here in this community because their campus is nimble enough to create programs that's gonna help companies be successful. It's hard to do that in the larger campuses. We will continue to work with NMMI, obviously, we're partnered with Job Corps, apprenticeship programs, and I sit on the board for their Eastern Air Force Development to push out funds to help our young people and other programs in this area. In our community development side of the house, we will work with and continue to work with how we can help recruit quality healthcare with our hospitals. Both CEOs of both hospitals are on the EDC board and they know what's going on, they can see what the forecast is on what we are trying to achieve. And so they can have the right opportunities in place to support not only those opportunities, but more importantly, the people that are here to serve our community and the people that live here in Roswell-Chavas County. Of course, hospitality service industries will always support that as, as we talked about earlier. Retail recruitment, we've done a couple of projects already with them. Quality of place, I mentioned, tourism, tourism is economic development. And it's important that we help bring in new opportunities to excite people about being here and visiting to our community. Support Main Street, we serve on their board, we have an ex official position and we support those folks and how, what they do for Roswell. And as I mentioned earlier, legislatively advocate for small business here in our community so they continue to be successful. And with that, Mr. Mayor, Counselors, I stand for your questions, comments.
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Espirito. Counselor Lady Best.
Yes, sir, since you're part of the Airport Advisory Commission and EDC, a couple of months ago, we were told that we hadn't heard from Ascent since January. Can you please tell me exactly what's going on there and why we are not continuing with that?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Best, we, we have not heard from them. What I understand, what, what I remember, recall is we did, the city provided a, a term sheet to Ascent. They were asked to provide a response by, by a deadline. I don't believe that ever happened. I thought I would see Ascent at the MRO trade show. They were there, but the, the president CEO was not because he had family issues. But I've not heard from them. I've, I've contacted the state because as you know, the state has invested or planned to invest quite a bit of money to support Ascent and they have not heard from them either. We reached out and not heard anything. So to answer your questions, I, I don't know where we're at with Ascent. It's been probably five months since I believe the term sheet, the term sheet was due back to the city.
So do we know why they dropped off the face of the earth? What did the city do or EDC do to frustrate, irritate, push them out?
I don't know that I know the answer to that yet, Counselor Best, because I've not spoke with them. I don't really know the issue, I, I don't believe it was the EDC issue, I'm not saying because I'm with EDC. But I just know that they had issues with the way they wanted to see their project go. And I think for them, it became a matter of cost. From what I, my opinion, is that the cost of the project soared so much, and that's no one's fault. That's, that was a, that was a byproduct of COVID, I think. When, when all those prices escalated, all the construction costs escalated, I think that really made them concerned. If you recall, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Beth, the, the project originally was about an eighteen million dollar project. It almost doubled to thirty, thirty-one million dollars. I think if anything, that's, that was probably, that's probably the issue. But again, I don't know that for a fact, that's just my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Best. Any further comments? Okay, you've seen none. Thank you very much, Mr. Espirito, for your presentation and what you do on behalf of the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have public participation. Next, we have public participation. We will start today. I have, I know we've had some things that were on the agenda and taken off, but we have some for non-agenda items that would like to speak to the council. We do this so if somebody has something they want to tell the city, they can do, do it and leave and they're not here all night till we hours of the morning. I have Tori Hornick. Tori, would you like to speak to us on these skate parks? You have to come up and give your name and, name, address and...
My name is Tori Hornick. I live at 1404 West 8th Street. And I'm here today to discuss the skate park and, but I'm going to read off my phone just so you know. So I'm here today to thank the community and the members of the city council and the Parks and Recreation for the progress we have been making to our skate park and the local skate community. As you know, the skate park is an important gathering place for multiple live action sports and our city's youth. But, and by improving its conditions and having local gatherings, we are creating a safe and welcoming environment for the community to come together and enjoy these sports. But more importantly, the memories, recently myself and other members of the skate community have seen the importance that these actions, or seen the importance that the skate park can bring to the future youth. And we're just really excited that we've been meeting with some of the members of community, of the city council and Parks and Recs. And we're just really, we just want to say thank you for taking the time to make these steps in progression. And that's all, basically. I just want to say thank you because we have been meeting up and it is going, and it's, it's going in a positive direction. Sorry, I get nervous talking up loud. But that's all. I just wanted to say thank you guys because we are moving forward with everything and we, we do have a lot of positive stuff planned.
Thank you. If you don't mind, if anyone has any questions, Ms. Hornick?
No.
Any questions?
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for coming up. See, we weren't that bad.
No, of course.
Okay, that's all we have on the non-agenda items that I have up on what, item five, we have Mr. Chaney. Was an agenda item that was removed. Mr. Chaney, would you care to come up and give a speech? Oh, he's gone? Okay. Mr. Jennings, Thomas Jennings, would you care to...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, staff, Roswell residents. I'm Thomas Jennings and my office is 111 South Kentucky in Roswell. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight regarding the public comments. Originally, I was on the agenda under the heading of public hearings regarding a zoning item and the Planning and Zoning Commission approval of a zoning change for case 23003 for, from a zone change from a residential R3 to a commercial C4 at 107 North Kentucky Avenue. This morning, I learned from the city clerk when requesting a copy of the agenda that the then item had been pulled from the request of the, at the request of the city attorney Hess Intima. I'm sure Mr. Intima can explain that, this reasoning. For your information, my office and residents are in, both in downtown Roswell, in the historic district. I'm in the neighborhood, I've been a neighborhood block captain and an advocate in support the revitalization of downtown in the historic district. In my opinion, the request to rezone this residential property located in the historic district was motivated by complaints to the city planning and zoning community improvement director and other staff regarding illegal use of a vacant lot for 18-wheeler semi trucks and vans to make deliveries, daily parking of nine or more cars utilizing of a shipping container for storage and generally an uncapped property located in a residential neighborhood in the historic district. All that stuff is illegal and it continues to this day. As a former mayor and a city counselor, I'm familiar with the city planning and zoning issues and processes. Quite frankly, I was dismayed at the, at the response that I got for complaints as other people complained and the way this is now resulting in a appeal of approval. Under city Roswell code zoning ordinance, the Planning and Zoning Commission shall decide whether or not to approve a request for a zone change. In its deliberation, the Planning and Zoning Commission shall not approve a zone change unless it finds it conforms to the city's land use plan, is in the public interest and is not solely to the interests of the applicant. This zone change did not conform to the city's land use plan, was not in the public interest and was solely at the interest of the applicant. The city's land use plan indicates the property located at 107 North Kentucky Avenue is residential, not commercial. The residential, the residential neighbors, neighborhood of the property will increase in tax value and diminish in sales value. And the change in zone is solely at the interest of the applicant. It is requested that the city administration, mayor, council and community consider the fact of this zoning change to determine if it is in the best interest of both the historic district and the city of Roswell. Again, thank you for your time and I appreciate the opportunity to say something. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you have, anyone have any questions, Mr. Jennings? Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we have, we have Anthony Casares on item six. That, item six is, is a zoning public hearing. If you intend to, we have to swear him in for a zoning public hearing. Madam clerk, you have to be sworn in or do you want to wait and give your testimony during that time?
We can swear them in.
We'd have to swear them in?
Please.
And would you mind waiting until we get to your item? It'll be real quick. Should be. Okay. Do we have, Anthony is the only one on item six. Then we have Liz Foster on item 15 that is going to come up. And so I don't believe we have to swear her in, but if you don't, if you don't mind waiting to item 15, we should get to that pretty quick, too. It's the first item in our non-action items, or our action item, under new business. Liz, are you still here? Okay, is that all right? Okay. Is there anyone else that care to make any public comments about anything to the city? Is there anyone else that care to make any public comments? Is there anyone else who care to make any public comments? Okay. Thank you. So next, we will go to item six. So in zoning case number 23-004, includes a variance to residential distances, a variance to the location of zone seats for a commercial cannabis establishment at 711 North Union. So Counsel Lady Arnold for item six.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to approve zoning case 23-004 CANN, which includes a variance to residential distance requirements, a zone change to CCAN and a conditional use permit with corresponding conditions of approval in order to operate an adult-use recreational and medical retail cannabis with existing press lab located at 711 North Union Avenue.
We have a motion by Counsel Lady Arnold. Is there a second? We have a second by Counselor, Councilman O'Pressa. Okay, we have a motion now under, under discussion if... Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the city council. Zoning case 23-004 CAN is a request for zoning for a retail cannabis for medical and recreational cannabis at 711 North Union Avenue. There is already an operational press lab at that location for medical cannabis that was established prior to the ordinance. They are requesting in order to operate a retail establishment for cannabis, two variances, the zone change to the floating zone, CCAN and a conditional use permit. This 711 North Union, where the star is on the map, is in the C1 Neighborhood Commercial zoning district. The other C1 on that map is CVS Pharmacy. As you can see in this zoning map, it's surrounded by residential. So there's going to be two variance requests for this. Here's an aerial of the, the site as well as the surrounding land uses. You can see a lot of residential, two vacant lots to the north and the applicant photos of the property itself. The photo with the garage is the area where they will hold the retail cannabis establishment if you approve it tonight. They do have the Press Lab, Inc., which is, is requesting this case. They do have a cannabis manufacturer class three license issued by the state of New Mexico. They've been producing medical-grade cannabis products since 2020. And they have also, the state has issued an integrated cannabis micro-business license to Press Labs, Inc. for, for their retail cannabis upon approval tonight. And tonight, the case, the zoning case before you, if approved, will allow them to dispense medical and recreational cannabis at their location. The conditions of approval are located in the council packet, page 49, exhibit F, and as well as their business plan. Press Labs, Inc. has put a lot of work into renovating that building. It was used for, by Prim Drug for several decades. So it has a history of, of dispensing medicine from that particular location. And we have received no protests or inquiries for this case. Just to let you know, in the cannabis ordinance, regardless of your decision tonight, they will be allowed to continue the operation of their press lab. The first variance request is a request to the locational prohibitions in the C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. Cannabis establishments per the cannabis ordinance are required to be in the C2 zoning district. In the zoning ordinance in the C1 Neighborhood Commercial District, C1 allows drugstores, food stores and markets as used by right. That's just information. Various request number two is for the, the distance separation to residential. You can see on the map that this location is within 300 feet of residential. So they will need a variance for that. The zone change to CCAN is required for all cannabis retail establishments. And so they're, they're requesting the zone change for the CCAN floating zone. And that CCAN means commercial cannabis zoning district. Also, they were requesting a conditional use permit, which is also requested by all cannabis retail establishments. So they will need their CUP for that as well. Exhibit F contains the information such as hours of operation and they've, they will comply with that. At the meeting on April 25th, 2023, the Planning and Zoning Commission motioned to pass cannabis case 23-004 to city council without a recommendation. So they neither recommended approval or denial of the case, they just passed it to you without a recommendation. Six to zero. So tonight, the city council is requested to consider approval of zoning case 23-004 CAN, including the variance to residential distance requirements, the variance to C1 locational prohibitions, the zone change to CCAN and conditional use permit with corresponding conditions of approval to operate an adult-use retail cannabis establishment for recreational and medical cannabis with existing press lab located at 711 North Union Avenue. I stand for questions.
Hey, we have, okay. Okay, thank you for, we're standing for questions. Do we have any questions by members of the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Anthony, would you like to...
I'm sorry. I have Counselor Perry and Counselor Halverson wanting to speak.
Okay. Okay, we're there. Okay. All right, you have Counsel, Counselor Halverson, Perry and Counsel Lady Moore. Would it be proper, would go ahead and have the gentleman testify that would like to, if we could swear Mr. Casares in? So into that, so we have...
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, moving forward, anybody who's answering questions should be sworn in. And then this, as it is a hearing, it wouldn't be unusual for the applicant to make his statement and then the council move into full questions.
Yeah. Okay, so, okay, is there anyone else that cares to speak in relation to this item today? Is there anyone else that cares to speak to this item today? Okay, seeing that there's none, so we, clerk, would you swear this gentleman in, Mr. Casares in?
Can you state your name, please?
Anthony Casares.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear and affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Casares. If you care to make your statement.
Okay. Thank you for your time. My name is Anthony Casares. I'm part owner of 711 North Union. The other two owners...
Can you pull the mic up so that everybody can hear you on the TV, too?
Okay, I'll start over. My name is Anthony Casares. I'm part owner of 711 North Union. I'm also the contractor, GB98, MM2, 3 and 4 Heating and Cooling, and the spokesperson for Press Labs Incorporated. I'm here today with my son and daughter, Lisa Gilmore and Michael Casares. I'm here today to ask for your approval for zoning case number 23004. We're a small micro-business that has been preparing for operations in Roswell for over four years. We're approved by the state and the city to manufacture cannabis products. We're asking for your approval to open a dispensary at the same location. What do we do that's different from other companies? We make edibles that don't have any chemicals in them. We press cannabis and it's pure without any byproducts. So that, with that, we make chocolates, edibles, different types, strawberry, it goes on, gummies. Those edibles are very difficult to make. It took a lot, a lot of practice. We've got it down good. They last a long time. And we're pretty proud of what we do. We believe that we would bring some benefits to Roswell. We'd create at least seven to 10 more jobs. Each job... 10 more jobs. Each job would pay, would start at $17 an hour. That's what we currently pay. And we would generate tax revenue. We would promise to make our edibles safe to use. That would mean that they'd have to be dosed right and so forth. We would improve the neighborhood by putting a new parking lot there, reservicing that area. That area was kind of dilapidated over the years. We bring it back to life now. You know, the dispensary or city district regulations set forth by the city and the state, these regulations will help to ensure that we do our job right. We've had zero inquiries, zero complaints, not that I'm aware of anyway. Our products are currently over 40 dispensaries. We're just now making products for one of the largest dispensary companies in the state. They're out of Colorado. They've hired us to make quite a bit of product for them. We were just inspected both by the Environmental Department and the state of New Mexico Cannabis Division, where we passed with excellent numbers. Actually, they want to train, the environmental department wants to train some of their employees at our facility for future, because I guess it's still kind of new. I'd like to end by saying, you know, the building we're at was Prim Drug, and they did compound medicine there for probably about five decades. And we're just going to continue that, we'd like to, with retail, such as they did. We're asking for your approval and believe that we're a valuable asset to the city of Roswell, and we promise to make safe cannabis. Thank you for your time. You can ask me any questions if you have.
Thank you. Okay, if anybody has any questions of Mr. Casares, if you'd just be here close, and we'll have, we've got counselors right now on the list. We have, we have Counselors Halverson, and then Perry, and then Councilman Moore. So, or Counsel Lady, Counsel Lady Halverson, would you care to ask your question?
Yes, my question is for Ms. Hildreth, though. So, the people, the residential people in the neighborhood, how are they informed? Are they sent letters, or?
Yes, Counselor Halverson, Mayor, Counselors, the, there's a, we notify the neighbors within 300 feet of this property, and that did not include the streets, the alleys. And that is in the packet. That map is in the packet of the notification area. It was quite extensive. I think there were about...
Yeah, I saw that. Sorry, go ahead.
So, yes, that's how we notify them, with a letter notifying them of the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilman Perry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to follow up to the question that was just asked, as I look at Exhibit E, and I see the letter and everything that was sent out, do we send this letter in Spanish as well, or is this only sent out in English?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Perry, the letter is only sent out in English.
Okay. The reason that I ask of such, I'm sorry, Exhibit C, as I go through Exhibit E, which we look there, and I, I could easily make the assumption that everyone here speaks English, and I don't mean any offense in saying that they possibly don't, but as I look through the list, there may be potential of folks who do not. That's number one. Those, even if everyone who is within the boundary does speak English, I know from experience, from talking with people, and I apologize that I'm just seeing it now as I look through this letter, but if I don't understand what a C can is, and if I don't understand what a cannabis establishment is, I'm going to just disregard this letter, where most people, especially in the elderly, don't recognize this as the word cannabis, where they may pick up on the word marijuana. And as I'm looking at it, really, the only place that it says, even anything that's happened whatsoever as far as the specificities of it, is under the description of zoning application, case 23-004, C A N N, request to approve the variance of residential distance requirements, variance to C1 location prohibitions, zone change to C can, and conditional use permit to operate an adult-use retail cannibal, cannabis establishment with existing press lab. I understand this because just, I've been doing city council governing for 12 years. I don't know that, that every resident is going to understand this. So I have concerns that just because we've not heard back from the public does not necessarily mean that the public is fully on board with this. My reservations with this location, as though there are some places on Union that are, are commercial, by and large, it is, it is a, it is a residential area still. I know that it's a thorough street, it's an artery, but it is still a, it's still residential area. With that being said, what zoning areas are allowed under ordinance currently for C can?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Perry, the ordinance specifies C2 for the cannabis establishments. That's why this is requesting a variance to that, that requirement.
Okay. And what in the ordinance is listed currently under days and hours of operation?
It's, well, the City Council, at one time last year, they specified the hours of operation for all cannabis operations.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Perry, the ordinance actually doesn't have that. Those are including the conditional use permits, because they're done by design. It's contained in the packet.
I'll tell you the...
Okay, that, okay, that's what I was, that was what I, thank you, Mr. Anthony. That's what I was trying to make sure of, that we were still under conditions on that, that it was not set for, because I remember there was some desire of changing, but I can't remember if any of that happened or not. So my reservations were, you know, I was uncomfortable as it was for retail sale. I, I think I have had somewhat of a change of knowledge and understanding and compassion when it concerns the medical end of things. When it comes to the recreational end of things, I think we tried to be as careful as possible to put these in places that were, that were going to, to have the least effect on our residents, on our children, on those things. And I think we were very careful to keep these out of C1 areas. And I think that the council was very, very correct in that. So I have, I have major concerns with us changing a C1. Those are meant for neighborhood markets. Those are made for the little boys who are on bicycles, who the mom sends for a loaf of bread, or sends them down for five pounds of sugar. Those are made for the family that stops to get candy bars, or cokes on their way, or ice on their way to a picnic. It wasn't necessarily built for us to have this kind of thing. I recognize that Prim Drug was there for a great number of years. They were there, there providing a service that has always been seen as a great recommendation within a C1 district, because it allows for people who do have those needs for prescriptions, and for Band-Aids, and Tylenol, and for wound dressings, and all that stuff, to be able to get to those as easily as possible. I don't see this as a, an establishment that's going to be selling recreational as something that I'm comfortable with having right there in the middle of a residential area. I'd like to hear if there's anyone who has any other thoughts, but those are my concerns right now. Thank you.
Thank you, man. Thank you, Councilman Perry. Next, we have Council Lady Moore.
Yeah, I also have a question for you. You said that you sent out a letter. My church sits on that corner, right there. We never got a letter. I'm the secretary, and I open all the mail. We never got a letter. It's in, it's not even two blocks from there. So you say that the mails go out, and you did an extensive amount. So I struggle with that, how this, this letter process that we keep talking about. Secondly, I still also have concerns like that the, with this being a residential, like she said, it is so close. There are children, there's a daycare like two blocks one way, there's the school a few blocks back that other way. The kids will right cross through there, on H Street, going to, to the, to the, to the park and stuff. So I'm really concerned about changing about this. You know, I struggle anyway, but I'm really concerned about this one, just because of where it is about to change and allowing the C2, I mean, C1 to go into the C2, or whichever it is. But I really struggle with that. I just don't think, I know everybody's, is legal, and, but every, every situation, there's not, there's not a place for this in every situation. And I think that I really struggle with this one. And I, I would have, a lot would have to change for me to consider that this is okay, because, like I said, I go to church a block from that. I could see that, you know, right there. I pass that every three, four times a week. There's always children walking around, and I don't remember seeing it being that dilapidated, but if that's what we need to say, I understand. And there's a couple, a lot of things going on on that, on that corner. So I just, I'm not really okay with this, 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 this change being made right where it sits. I yield.
Thank you, Council Lady Moore. Any further questions?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Moore, could I get your, that church's address, please?
1004.
1004?
It'd be 1004 North Union. Yeah, so that'd be two blocks. It's on the left, left side.
And then there's one right in front of us on the other side. Not sure. So who sends out, I'm sorry, who sends out these letters?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Moore.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Planning and zoning staff sends out these letters.
Sorry, thank you.
And the, the map is in your packet.
Mm-hmm.
Exhibit D. And, and this does not include the, the roadways, they don't count in the 300 feet.
So your 300, the width of your roads are not included?
They're not, they're not included in the 300 feet.
So?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Moore, I would like a rebuttal on that. We've never seen any, we don't see hardly any children at our corner. We own the chiropractor building across from us, too. And we're there every single day. We don't see any children, hardly any pedestrians at, at that. So I'm not sure when you say you see children. Also, anywhere in town, there's going to be a church within three or four blocks of where you, where you are. And then the neighbors right directly next to us, they're Spanish-speaking, but we've already spoken to them. And just by looking at, I've lived in Roswell my whole life, done business here, and most of the people that, that hear are English-speaking that receive the letter. So I'm not sure about people not speaking English within this area. So I disagree with that.
Okay. Well, you're entitled, and that's why we all, that's why I say hearing, and we're entitled to, you know, you know, so we, and so that's just, I've been in Roswell my whole life also, and I've been attending that church for 35 years. And so, it's, it's a lot of people, movement over there. I don't know if you're there on Sunday. I don't know. Like I said, it's just, and if the kids that live on Delaware and all them have to go to church, they have to cross through there. So what do you mean, you don't, you may not see any children, you might be in there working. But I'm just saying if they have to cross the street to get to, to the church. So there's, I'm just saying there's movement. I'm not saying that that's their reason you shouldn't be there in general. I just, the reason we have a C1 and a C2 on purpose is to, to limit the access to some things in some neighborhoods, and the state in that has given us that authority. And so I'm not necessarily, you know, saying that you're wrong or I'm wrong, but, you know, I just know that, I'm just kind of uncomfortable. So, but I'm gonna keep listening. I'm not closing my mind yet, so.
Yeah, I bet.
All right, I yield.
Thank you, Council, Council Lady. Next up, Councilman Orpressa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is for Mildred. I believe I heard you say, but I want to make sure that I understood, that you had no complaints from the, from the letters that were sent out?
No, sir. There were, there, we didn't receive any input. No one showed up at Planning and Zoning.
Either written, verbal, any, any kind of communication to, to, to state that they were in, not, not in favor of it?
There, there was no response.
Okay. And, and the church, that Mrs. Counselor Moore is talking about, would that, would that have gone to the church itself, or the owner of the property?
If it's within 300 feet, they would have received a letter. And I have been sending letters to the, the property owner, as well as the property itself, if there's a building on it.
Okay. Okay, Mrs. Moore is clearing up that the church owns the property, so obviously the, somebody should have received one.
Thank you. And Mr. Bass, did you care to respond?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Counselor Orpressa, it looks, just pulling up the map here, it looks like it's just outside of the 300-foot radius. So that'd be, just as general, if somebody didn't get notice within the radius, that gives, it's appealable error. And so that's why we just double-checked. Right, you guys are just outside. So they did hit, the zoning department did its job on this one.
Thank you. Council Lady Bass?
Their return receipt, is that correct?
Yes.
With the little green thing you gotta sign?
Correct. And those cards come back, yes.
That's about 768 shot. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Counselor Best.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I received two or three of the letters myself, because I do own a few properties in that neighborhood. We do own the property at 801. We did get a letter at our place of business. And if I'm not mistaken, the neighbors from behind us is also C1, brought us a copy of theirs. So that would have been the third I did see. And it did look very important. They're city of Roswell. It's almost like you're doing something wrong when you get that letter. It scares you, you know?
You know, I got, I have some of my friends that got one of those letters from the city of Roswell, and it scared them, too.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know if you, you have seen, but there's been some floating around out there from 425 Richardson, North Richardson. There's some letters floating around out there that scare a lot of people. But it wasn't from the city. But, you know, while they was accused, they said, they acted like it was from the city. So I got one of those letters. Well, my friends got one of those letters.
Yeah.
You know, are there any further comments? You talked about the parking on that. Is there plenty of, on the front of the store on, on the Union Street, there's, as I recall, there's about eight, eight or nine parkings, and then you'll be able to park down the side again?
You know, going, going through town and just passing dispensaries one after another, going down through Second Street, and then going back through Main, I normally only see two or three, you know, maybe customers at each dispensary. I don't see us filling up that parking lot, honestly. If we do, we're, we're doing great, but honestly, I don't see that. We do have, I believe there's about eight spots there. We're gonna have to do one, two actually, for handicap. So there'll be one, and then a van access for that. And then everything else will be for parking. But we do have a, I think we have enough room, honestly.
Well, in the other, one of the other things that I would just like to say in looking at this, that... just like to say in looking at this, that, uh, so, I would just like to look at this and I know on the compounding, uh, um, Mr. Shannon has had, uh, when it was Prim Drug, had had count, uh, compounding on that site, I know for probably twenty-five years or probably since then the eighties. And, uh, it's about when I think they came here. Uh, and so, I know they had that, the compounding all the time and a regular pharmacy and, and so, I know the, the products that they sell had, are different, uh, from there because they, they're medical-like type products. And, uh, and I think this use is not very different from what the, the use was of the property under, uh, under Prim Drug. If you go back fifty years to Prim Drug, I think it was on further down on the corner on Second, in that Choppington or on Second and Union. Uh, but, for, uh, for the last thirty years, I would say you've had, you know, that, that kind of product. I know that, that you're, you're using something different, you're using marijuana and, as opposed to, uh, other drugs. But that kind of parts, products have, have been basically sold on that corner, uh, or, you know, within a block. Since they moved, it was vacant for a little while, probably seven, eight years, it's probably vacant. But, uh, i- it's pretty much an existing, established type of use in that neighborhood. Uh, and I don't know, I know the products are a little different, if you make your, when you, you make yours, with your, your products, you said all your chemicals were removed, but what kind of chemicals are you talking about?
Well, the, the other process, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, the other process would be, uh, VHO. Uh, so they would use butane to extract the, the cannabinoids, the oils and stuff. Uh, we just use heat and pressure.
Yes, you just use pressure?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, we've, we've spent quite a bit on equipment and that's what we use, just heat and pressure and we extract it that way. The city didn't let us do a butane, uh, setup there because of, uh, safety reasons. Plus, we weren't interested in that anyway. We wanted to do a more of a natural extraction.
So, heat and pressure would just be, yeah, that?
Yes, sir.
You don't have near, near the combust, combustible material?
No, it's all vapor. There's no combustionables in our building. Uh, I'd like to mention that if I go down, uh, Eighth Street and then turn on Washington, I have a home down right by that. And I'll hit Swap Cannabis right there on the corner, you know, across from Dairy Queen. Directly behind them are homes closer to them than there are to us, in my opinion.
Well, that's true. And the old gas station?
Yeah, they're like within ten feet, it almost feels.
Mr. Mayor, may I, I'm gonna interject to make a couple of comments that you guys need to consider as a body in this quasi-judicial nature. So, first, there are two distinct requests. So, one's the variance to be able to behave as if they're, that this distributor or this current manufacturer is in a C2 zone. And the second is a variance against the three hundred foot rule to be next to a residential zone. So, uh, the legal standard for a variance, uh, under the zoning code is, is applicable here, is that this property owner would have, if the strict application of the ordinance would result in a particular exceptional or undue hardship, as opposed to a more, a mere inconvenience upon the property owner. State courts have noted that it is clear that a showing that an owner might receive a greater profit if the variance is granted is not suffis, sufficient justification for the variance. And it ordinarily refers to circumstances in which no reasonable use can otherwise be made of the land. So, though, you will have to make a factual determination that that standard is met in order to grant each variance. That said, there is one complicating factor and that is this property was already zoned in previous to the ordinance. So, it's grandfathered in for manufacturing in perpetuity so long as this business continues to do that. And so, I'd, I'd ask one factual question, did you have any, uh, retail license before this, last year?
No, uh, I'd like to comment on that. The reason we didn't have a retail license was because when we became or started this, uh, venture, we had to have a certificate of occupancy in hand prior to our licensing. So, that meant funds, uh, remodel, a building. Uh, we, we couldn't just come up here and promise you, uh, on a piece of paper, you know, as to what we would do. We had to actually have the structure. So, we couldn't do the retail, uh, until we had, uh, the structure, but first we had to get the manufacturing license. So, that was the order that we were in. At the time, uh, it was, it was a lot more difficult, a lot more difficult for us.
So, at the time, you?
That's why it took us so long.
You couldn't get any of those things until you had, until you were in operation?
Yes, sir. You had to walk in and it had to be fully functional. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we also, uh, have Councilman Perry. Did you care to address this issue again?
Uh, yes, yes, sir, and I, I don't mean to be ar, argumentative, but I, 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 I just have to say, since, uh, we're, we're going down into a, a, a spiral here and I just wanted, just to bring us back to where we are. We, Charles Shannon's name has been brought up and how he compounded drugs and did such wonderful, great things for our community. And I agree with you a hundred percent. Charles Shannon, when we came to Roswell, became my pharmacist and, uh, I love that man, love what he did for this community, love, uh, uh, I mean, did great things. I don't remember, but, but I, I, I don't want to, to compare what Charles Shannon did to recreational marijuana. They're just not the same thing. I, I, I don't see the same thing or even comparably, I don't even remember Charles Shannon selling cigarettes. I don't remember Charles Shannon selling alcohol. I remember Charles Shannon selling medicines and, and there may have been a counter that had, you know, M&amp;M's. I don't know, but I know I went there to get medications. He did have Class Four drugs. He did have Class Four, Scheduled For Controlled Substances, which cannabis is a Schedule Four. But he wasn't wrapping them in gummy bears and he wasn't putting them in candy and, and those kinds of things. So, I do not see, though I, I had voted for these kind of facilities within what we have in ordinance. I'm not willing to variate from that to this degree. I feel like if we continue to just variate and variate, we might as well just open it up and just let them just build one right next to Roswell High School and, uh, next to the daycares because that, there'll be no need for, for, for the ordinance itself. We are seeing a Class Four, uh, Scheduled Controlled Substance. And the manufacturing, I get, that's closed, it's locked up, they're doing their business. Most people driving by don't even realize what's happening there, I get that. But now, we're gonna open those doors, we're gonna be selling edibles, we're gonna be selling, uh, and there's paraphernalia that go with all of that. And it's in a neighborhood. And I just don't think, at least at the time that the council approved this, that we envisioned having these kinds of facilities. So, I, I just, I cannot compare this to what Charles Shannon did in this community. Not again, I'm not here to say that I'm against this company or what they're doing or trying to make a profit. But we have an ordinance, we have our time, place and manner for a purpose. And I think that we provided very good detail in that to try to help and protect this community. Thank you.
I'd like to say something.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, sitting down just a minute ago, I did see, uh, RCCEDC, Roswell, Travis County Economic Development Corporation. And the top, the very top, uh, program was Pecos Valley Productions. Uh, it's kind of a slap in the face to me, you know, when I see this and then, uh, hear, hear that. Especially twenty-nine U-Jobs, seventeen dollars an hour awarded, two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Uh, we're just a small, uh, business, born and raised here. We're not coming in from a big corporation out of state, like most of the other companies that are here.
Thank you, Mr. Councilor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to respond to that if I could. I, I'd just like to respond by saying that, uh, i- i- if, if, if you choose to have a location within the requirements of our ordinance, which allows us for time, place and manner, which is what these other companies have done, I, I think that I would have a different feeling, though I, I, I think y'all all recognize that I'm, I'm not supportive of recreational, uh, Schedule Four substances. However, uh, saying that, I recognize that the law is the law and that when we allow by the law, then I am bound by oath to allow what the law allows for. In this quasi-judicial right now, I'm being asked to go and variate from without, from what the law currently says. So, this is nothing personal against this business, small or large, and what their desires are to do in, in ma, making an enterprise or, or, or offering services to people who would like these services in the community. I, 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 I'm saying that your company has chosen to do so in an area that is prohibited by the ordinance. And I'm in favor of staying with the ordinance, that's all I'm saying at this particular event. Thank you.
Are there any further comments?
Rebuttal. Mr. Mayor, we were there prior to the ordinance, not the retail, but the manufacturing.
Your manufacturing was, was in existence prior to the ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Being passed?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I, I don't know that anyone was producing anything prior to approval of city because city, uh, uh, makes those approvals, so I, that, that's sort of concerning if there's any activity happening before the legal authorizations were to take place. However, I do recognize, as I've just said in my statement earlier, that there's been manufacturing going on there for a while. And I, 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 whether I particularly like what is happening or not is beside the point. I recognize that manufacturing behind lock and key and this, and, and that happening is a much different thing than open doors and selling retail cannabis. Thank you.
Ms. Mildred.
Mr. Mayor, Councilors, medical cannabis was allowed by the state prior to the, uh, the legal, or the allowing of recreational cannabis. And they have been producing medical cannabis. And that was prior to the ordinance that the city passed.
And so, now?
And they had the state license that, that is in your packet.
Now, they are producing still medical cannabis?
Yes.
So, that's?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Do your, your chocolate things or whatever are medical cannabis?
Medical and recreational.
And recreational?
Yes, sir. Also, our doors will not be open, they're, they will be locked, uh, and you will have to have approval to come into our building to our retail side. They will not be open like a Seven-Eleven. You will have to show ID and we will buzz you in. Yes, sir.
Can, can I ask a question real quick? You are only extracting and producing packaging, then you take it to retail stores. Is that what you're doing now? You are not selling out of that property?
No.
You're only selling to other, other, um, stores?
Correct. We've been following the rules.
Okay, well, whether we follow the rules or not, I just wanted to make sure that, that we are not selling out of that store 'cause I drive by there billions of times a day, so.
Yes, no, we would, we would...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure in my head, 'cause we were like playing around a little bit there and I just wanna make sure.
No, you bet, we, we would definitely lose our license if we did that.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, well, my, my statement is that you had a production license and, uh, you compared it to Swap, which was, uh, medical marijuana sales prior to, uh, the recreational sales being made. And, um, and that it had a, it, its location is next to residential. But that was one of the problems we faced was that when, uh, the recreational was passed, we were told that, that we, the vice licenses that were given to the medical marijuana, um, establishments, uh, had to be, we pretty much were strong-armed by the state and we had to allow them to sell, um, recreational. Um, at the time, you had a production license, you didn't have a recre, you didn't have a, a sales license. And, and so, we're not comparing apples and, um, apples to apples here, we're comparing apples and oranges. Now, what we're trying to do is turn around and make this into a recre, um, a retail establishment. And, and that's the problem I still have, is that it's too close to, um, uh, residential. And, um, and, and Union can't be compared to Second Street. Second Street, um, is, is a lot bigger, fair, fair, Union is busy, but it's still not the, the Second Street. So, um, we're, we're comparing apples and oranges when we're trying to say those things. Um, and, and the fact is, I was on the council and had no knowledge that you were a production site until after it was already enacted. So, that's, the, the city somehow didn't get, uh, didn't authorize it. You were in production supposedly before, before I even knew about it. So, um, I, 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 and I'm okay with the production portion of it. I still have questions about some of the things that might cost us, um, federal financing, but that's not to do with this. This is, is considering whether this meets the, the C can, the C can application. And, and I stand with Council Perry where I don't see that it does. So, that's, that's my problem. I yield, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Foster.
Any further comments? The, uh, as far as, when I, right now, there, the only thing, uh, is I see this for him to move to another place would probably be pretty expensive because you'd have to have more people and more, uh, find another place and move all the stuff that he already has now to change that. But he was in existence prior to, uh, our resi, our recreational cannabis and medical camp, uh, cannabis sales throughout. So, he was in, he was here referring, uh, first and, and, but he, so he's just asking to be able to sell the products that he makes, uh, now in the existing place that he, where he started from. And I don't think there's any, no one is accusing him of any violation of any law. Uh, and when I made some comments about, uh, the, uh, the previous pharmacist there and his family, I know them quite well. I know, all I'm saying is that they, they do, there's a lot of those, uh, uh, medicines that you have, whether it be marijuana or whether it be other prescription drugs that have, uh, pain relief tendencies and they have things that help people, uh, uh, do a lot of different things. And, and cannabis can be very helpful for people who have, who have cancer. And, uh, so when I look at that, I, I think that, that's all I'm saying. I'm not making any assertions that, uh, anything, I'm, I'm just saying that the same, similar products have been sold on that corner for a long time. Uh, I know if you go into a pharmacy now, you can buy, if you go into Walgreens or any of them, you, there's, you can buy more candy in that store almost than you can drugs and toilet paper and everything else. And so... And so, I mean, all those stores are big, and they sell multiple things. And in liquor stores, though, I think there's restrictions on what liquor stores can sell. Except if you're a 7-Eleven, it's one thing, you can have all the candy you want, but there've been liquor stores that were just selling liquor that had a hard time being selling candy bars in liquor stores, because, you know, the state thought that they were trying to entice children into the store. So there's been all kinds of things all around this. But in reality of the situation is, I think that this act is to try to help this small business that was created and started in Roswell before the other recreational stuff to allow them to compete and at an economic level with the same people, because they have a very unique product that they have that they sell. There is some questions about whether or not- about having the cannabis sell for recreational use, but when I drive by and I see the cannabis stores that are selling medical and recreational, there is, to me, there are generally very, very few cars there. It's not a problem, and, I mean, as far as being a lot of people. And when you talk about down on Washington and Second, I mean, back door of that place goes right over the fence into a residential area, that place on Second, and there's several others that are probably similar. So I don't know, but this allows this local guy who was into the manufacturing to expand his business a little bit into retail. I don't know that there'll be that much, but he did come up with a unique way of manufacturing these products. It apparently is a lot safer than using butane and some of the other stuff, whatever they use to manufacture that. So I have just mixed emotions on it. I don't particularly care for cannabis at all, but my only problem is I do know it has medical benefits to a lot of people. And in a lot of cases, it appears that the difference between recreational and medical is merely that you don't have to go see a doctor to figure out, get a prescription card to buy it. But, you know, that's just- that's the way I see it. But I think this seems to be a young, thriving business in Roswell that is trying to maybe get to compete a little more and maybe do more expansions and do more improvements to their building. I think that since they have been at 7-Eleven, of course, Union, I didn't know what was there, but they seem- it's a lot cleaner and busier than it was after the other pharmacy left. So I have mixed feelings on this, but I think this is a case of a local, home business trying to expand a little. And so, I don't know, it's questionable on however you look at it. Council Lady Best?
Yes, Ms. Meredith, could you please tell me if I'm wrong? He can continue to do what he is doing, no matter how we vote. He doesn't have to move his equipment. He doesn't have to move anything at all. He can take his storefront and open it somewhere else where it is more acceptable in the city, because I agree about the ordinance at this point. We made it for a reason. He's utilizing the property. He's not going to lose anything, not going to be out anything. He'll just have to find another place for his storefront. Am I correct or am I wrong?
That's correct. I showed one of those slides that had that part of the ordinance on it.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Council Lady Best. Council Lady Moore?
Mayor, I just- you said something that kind of made me think, because he said something about not being able to do that just for him to make more money or something like that, Mr. I- I- yes, Mr. I- Mr. Hess, thank you, sorry. And so, and I think if you just saying it just so that he can do more building and so you're kind of- what you just said kind of is putting more to my cause, because you just said just so he can make more money, just so he can build his building up and things like that, that's one thing, one of the reasons we're supposed to vote, not that it's not part of the ordinance, is just so that he could do that. Like I said, you know how- y'all know how I feel about it anyway, but I continue to struggle with the comparison to other people. Now, I understand you've been doing what you've been doing for a while, that's fair, you do what you do. I don't know how long you've been there, and that's not bad, because I told you how many times I passed the building and did not know that that's what y'all did there. So that's good, you know what I'm saying? Well, not really good, because people should know what you're doing there, but for the most part, so I did not know that that's what was going on there. But the idea that we just want him to do it just so he could- we should overlook all of our guidelines of what we've already decided was going to happen, just so he could make more money, kind of, like I said, goes along with the struggle, and I know that's why we're in business. That's why businessmen are in business, to make more money. Otherwise, you wouldn't, you know, be in business.
The retail will help us stay in business, though. The orders do come and go, and we do get close to an empty account. So we do- we do figure that the retail will help us stay in business and help keep our people employed. I mean, this just isn't so we can get rich. This is to help us stay in business. Yes.
Okay, thank you, Council Lady Moore and all. I just think he's made some improvements to the property, and it made- it makes- he's made our community look more vibrant and more, you know, made our community look better by his improvements, what he's done with the property now. I mean, before, it was just vacant.
Yes, how they redid the parking lot.
And he's done some improvements, yes.
And some other things that I've, you know, have.
And that's all I mean by that. Representative- or Council Lady Arnold?
Yes, Meredith, a quick question, just to make sure I understand correctly. Variances, do they go before planning and zoning? Did this go before planning and zoning and approval before moving to us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Portem. The case went to Planning and Zoning Commission, and Planning and Zoning Commission, they made a- they typically make a recommendation of either approval or denial to city council. In this case, City- Planning and Zoning Commission passed it to city council without a recommendation. That was their motion. And that's what they voted six to zero to, pass it to city council without a recommendation.
So when you say it came for without a recommendation, so they just decided not to make one, or it was like a thumbs down?
It wasn't a thumbs down. It wasn't approval. It was just, they decided to let you decide.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Council. Councilman Orpessa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I have a question for Mildred. When you accepted the applications for any business, it doesn't matter whether it's cannabis or not, any business, do you not look at the legalities of whether that business is legal or not, before referring it to planning and zoning or even accepting the application to determine whether that's a legal business or not?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Orpessa, in order for this business to legally sell retail cannabis, recreational cannabis, it had to go through the process.
Okay. Can I just stop you? And I'm sorry for interrupting, but in general, generally speaking, when somebody comes in and makes an application, I want to open whatever business it is, don't you, as the city staff, responsible for permitting any business, take into consideration whether you can go through the process and it becomes, whether it's a legal business or not?
Yes, that's right.
Let me give you an example. If somebody came in and said, "I want to open a rated R cinema," I don't know whether that's legal or not here in Roswell, but you determine that based on our policies, we don't have the ability to grant you a permit for a rated X cinema. So they won't go any further than your place? Am I wrong?
It would have to meet the zoning ordinance first, so that we do have a section in the code that regulates such businesses.
Okay, so I guess my point is, he got past your process, planning and zoning, so obviously it's legal. I mean, he's done the legal portion of it, or the portion that he has done has all been legal.
What he's been doing with the medical press lab? Yes.
No, I'm talking about the application process.
Okay, the application for...
Otherwise, he wouldn't be here if somebody determined that his business of trying to sell or retail wasn't legal. Otherwise, we wouldn't be sitting here trying to make a determination whether to grant him a variance or not. And the fact that we're here trying to determine whether to grant two variances, to me says, it's a legal process, and we have the power to do it as a city council, as long as it- as long as state law is not violated or federal law, whatever. So by the fact that we're sitting here trying to make that determination, we're doing what he's asking is asking for a legal variance. Is that not true?
He's asking for the variance so that his business will become legally non-conforming. Now, several of the other businesses that have requested to sell retail and medical cannabis were granted variances by this body as well.
So we're being kind of hypocritical, because we have granted other businesses same thing that we have that he's asking for. I'm not asking you a que- that's not a question, that's just a statement on my part. I yield, Mr. Mayor.
And this is your legal counsel, so...
Thank you. Okay, well, let's see. Councilman Perry, did you want to speak one last time?
Mr. Mayor, I hadn't planned to, but might I just remind council, anything within the boundaries of what council has set forth, I have to vote by the oath I took in favor. We are being asked of going outside of the conditions. And, you know, I'm just- I want to remind my colleagues, we've had other things that have been outside of the norm that have come to this council, and we make those decisions. Some of those things may be a carport that is too close to the right-of-way. It may be a racetrack that's in, you know, that's within the city limits, or it might be something totally different, but these things come all the time. And nobody is arguing, I haven't heard anyone argue, the gentleman's or the corporation's legal right to request this zone change. No one's arguing that. It's whether or not the zone change is appropriate for the area of town in which it's located is what's in question. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing no further questions, we- on a motion to- we have a motion to approve by Council Lady Arnold and seconded by Councilman Orpessa, if the clerk would call the roll.
Councilor Heldenbrand?
Aye.
Councilor Orpessa?
Yes.
Councilor Perry?
No.
Councilor Corn?
Yes.
Councilor Moore?
No.
Councilor Halverson?
No.
Councilor Foster?
No.
Councilor Best? Motion fails Board of Five. Did I miss somebody? Councilor Arnold?
Yes.
Yeah, so Councilor Arnold, one of the reasons why you missed her is her name's not on the list, I don't think.
That's correct, it's not. The tie.
Oh, good. It's five to five. The mayor votes yes.
Mayor? I'm hearing it. Councilor Sanchez saying no.
He said yes the first vote.
He did- he voted yes the first time. You know, we had to vote, and I made my motion after it was determined that it was five to five, and then he changed his vote.
Mr. Mayor, I- Mr. Icema may be able to help us with this, but it's my understanding of someone within a meeting votes in the affirmative of a vote that is approved, they can have it brought back to the table, but that would require all of us to re-give our vote, but I would yield to the expertise of Mr. Icema.
A member, yes, so, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Perry, the member who voted yes, who wants reconsideration, may make the motion.
The only way they can go back to it is for you to make a motion.
Grace, was that you speaking?
Yes, I was telling him that if he wants the vote to be taken again, that he has to make a motion. Did you want to make a motion or leave the vote as it is?
Oh, no. No.
You want to say no?
You're voting no?
No.
The question that clerk asked him if he wanted to make a motion, now, you know, this is really sticky.
It is.
But, Councilman Orpessa?
Mr.?
I just needed to ask our legal the question. Is it proper, after the mayor took the vote, I know you can ask for reconsideration, but I think this happened after the mayor made his determination or vote, and at that point, if I understand the rules of order, then whoever wants to have it reconsidered would have to ask for the reconsideration and to have a revote taken. Is that not correct?
I'm reading the rule right now. I'm reading the rule right now. Sorry to interrupt you, I'm Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I... This is sticky. The, you are the presiding officer, so if you were to make a ruling that the motion to reconsider is inappropriate or not germane at the time, based upon reasoning, or lack of new reasoning, then the council would have to vote to challenge the ruling of the chair. That would be the way we close this. So it's, typically you have to have a reason to reconsider, and the the person who voted yes has to articulate the reason to reconsider. So we have a problem. So just, moving to reconsider from buyer's remorse is not acceptable, is not, the chair can deny the motion.
I think what happened is he intended to say no, and he inadvertently said yes. Oh, yeah, no, I know you said no. That's what I was telling him.
Mayor, can you speak in your mic, please, a little bit?
Okay, this is, this is what my ruling is going to be. When we went through this vote, Councilman Sanchez voted yes the first time, and then, and then Councilman Foster was for, on the other side for no, and Council Lady Best was that, and then there was some confusion because council, it was five to four, and yet there are 10 councillors here, and then when Council Arnold said she didn't vote, she voted and made it, voted yes, made it five to five. I voted, then after she did that, that was five to five, I said it was a tie, and I vote yes. And at that time, after that, Mr. Savino wanted to change his, his vote. That was after the ruling of the chair, so I think, in my opinion, the ruling of the chair will stand unless someone makes a motion to reconsider, and I will rule that out of order if they do. Okay? So that, as far as I'm concerned, if you would like to reconsider, yes ma'am.
Your mic, please.
This is legal, because I really don't understand. Why do I, you get to say I could say the motion, but then you can tell me it's out of order? How, how is it out of order if I'm allowed to ask? I'm being funny, I'm really trying to get an understanding. If you say that I can make a motion to say, to revote or reconsider, or whatever that, whatever the words you just used, but then you said, then I'll say it's out of order, so how is it, how can I say it if it's out of order?
The way I, you want to do this, you want me to do? If I, if I, the way I understand it, the person who wants to change their vote has to make a motion to reconsider. And that did not happen in the time after I announced it, and then, so if you were to make a motion to have me, to challenge the ruling of the chair, I would rule that being out of order. Because it's, the only person can make that motion is Savino. And that's why I, when I, once I rule that, the motion to reconsider should have been done before the announcement of the vote, is the way I believe it should have happened. Am I correct, Mr. Perry? Maybe you don't want to answer that either, but... I'm good for it, and whatever.
I, if we want to move into closed session, I'll explain my reasoning, but I think the mayor's ruling is likely correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I think that I highly recommend at this point that someone make a motion that we go into closed session, pursue it, and let Mr. Eintma make consideration. I think that we need to be very careful on both sides of these things. We're dealing with something very serious, and now we're dealing with ADA things, so I think that would be very appropriate at this time.
Can we postpone it? Just a question, don't get me...
Oh, yeah, sorry, so, Madam Counselor, yeah, the vote's been called, the ruling, the motion has been ruled not germane, and nobody has challenged it. So if somebody makes a motion, so if we move on, so somebody has to challenge the chair, which nobody has done, or...
Your mic, please.
You said, "which nobody has done." He just told me I couldn't do it, because he would tell me I was out of order. So, so that's what I'm saying, but if I do it, you just said, "nobody has done it." So that's what I'm, I'm really trying to under, so I could do it, but I'd be out of order?
No, so you could challenge the rule, there'd have to be a second. And then, so it, what, what is?
The motion changes vote with Savino's...
Yeah, so Counselor Sanchez has not made, has not articulated a motion personally. Nobody can make a motion for him but him.
I get that part.
As such, there is no motion on the table, so there's no ruling of the chair. Therefore, a challenge to the ruling of the chair is not germane and out of order.
So it's out of order, okay.
Yeah, so it's out of order because there hasn't been a ruling to challenge. Because there's no proper motion to amend the vote. The only person who can make the motion is Counselor Sanchez, and he's not been able to articulate that.
Microphones, please.
Councilman Perry, yes?
No, I, it just sounded like y'all were talking, we could not hear.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just, Mr. Casades was going to say something, and I said, "We're talking about legal things now, not about the 2023-004." Okay, so... Okay, are there any other motions? Okay, seeing right along, we'll go to the item, the next item on to Jay's agenda, which is, I wonder what item, seven. Okay, this is where we'll move to a public hearing on ordinance 23-08, to hold a public hearing for the adoption, amending the dedication of municipal local option gross receipts tax. Counselorman Hildebrand?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we hold a public hearing to consider adopting ordinance 23-08, amending the dedication of a municipal local option gross receipts tax.
It will most by Counselorman Hildebrand, a second by Counselorman Corn. Okay, Mr. Eintma?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a pretty simple ordinance that you have to consider. Presently, the environmental tax is dedicated for facilities maintenance and operations of two of our funds, water sewer and sanitation. State law no longer requires this, and so if the funding is kept dedicated, that has the effect of prevent, instead of going into the general fund, it would go into however these funds are allocated in your budget process. You know, the advantage is money can be used when it's in the general fund whenever it's needed most. The disadvantage, of course, is that there's not a set revenue amount going into these enterprise funds. These enterprise funds do, of course, have their own revenue sources.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hearing. Any questions on, on this ordinance from any councilman?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Perry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will try to be brief, because I'm here at a camp, and there's a bunch of teenagers that are about to start chapel services, and I don't want that to get into disturbing. I guess my concern, questions are, is what the desire, if I'm understanding, and I'm not seeing a lot of this in writing, but I'm understanding that, that the desire is to utilize this funding for ambulatory services. Am I to understand that to be correct, or am I, I'm confused?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Perry, I think you may be in the incorrect part of the agenda.
I'm at the wrong place, never mind. Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Eintma. No, I'll wait till that point. I'm at the wrong place. Thank you.
Yes, okay, Council Lady Arnold?
Mr. Eintma, quick question. So I understand that we're actually trying to update so that we're in compliance. In HB 479, there isn't anything that states that we cannot leave it the same and have those funds go to infrastructure, correct?
Yes, Counselor, that's, Madam Protom, that's correct.
Okay. One of my big concerns is I don't, and Ms. Janey's not here for me to ask this, but as I understand it, these funds have never been appropriated according to ordinance, or we don't actually, can't really track if they were ever actually designated into infrastructure, sanitation, or water. Is that correct, at least to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, the funds, the money from this for the past four years, I believe, were sheltered in the sanitation fund. However, they were used exclusively, they were not given signature authority by the, whoever was directing sanitation, and were used by community development for housing demolitions and that, and the clean and safe program. It's my legal opinion that the clean and safe program is, does not fit squarely within the dedication of the ordinance.
Okay. That being said, that's kind of one of my concerns, and a lot of my fear as to why our current situation with water and sanitation regarding the enterprise funds, and the fact that they're behind and they should be self-sustaining. While I understand the concept of adding it to the general fund, and can't say that I necessarily don't support that, at this time, I do not believe that that is the best course of action. What I would like to see is that it is actually appropriated to water and, and in sanitation. I actually think it should be utilized appropriately for the next four years, and then reconsidered at a later date in legal, but I think it should be utilized to help them rebuild their enterprise funds, because I do, I have actually spoken to Mr. Sanchez, and have learned that there have been several projects that this could have benefited their department on, and we wouldn't have had to dip into general funds. So I am just asking the members of the council to consider allowing this to sit, allowing the enterprise funds to build a little bit longer, and then we work to bring it back to legal or finance for reconsideration at a later date. I'm really good at remembering, and I'll put it on my calendar. But anyway, so, I just ask for your consideration. I yield. Mr. Chair? I'm going to try something that I learned at Molly from Senator Daniel Ivy Soto. Yep?
Don't do it.
Yeah, we'll see how it goes out, so I'm sure you'll correct me. But I would actually like to make a motion to refer it to legal in February of 2027. I'm asking to refer it back, no, to refer it back to legal, and then we'll just, we'll hit it in 2027. And then we can revisit it then.
Well, on whether it goes to 2027, can we, we cannot find a future council from addressing this issue after we have a next election. Wouldn't that not be correct?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, so I, the, it could simply, kudos, Madam Protom, that's clever. Yeah, it could simply be reintroduced in another bill in legal and still come up again. But by referring this particular one, it would bind the, well, it wouldn't bind, the council could always reconsider the decision later. But, yeah, it's, it doesn't kill the substance of the bill in any way. It would just have to be reintroduced at committee or through you.
Just have to bring it back up?
That's correct.
Okay, so if you, so you have a motion? Did you make that in the form of a motion, Councilman Opressa?
I did. I'm waiting for a second.
Is there a second?
I would be willing to do a second if I understood exactly what the motion is.
Counselor Oropesa, the motion is that this be referred to legal committee to be heard in four years. So it's really, it's kind of a mixed motion, it would be a, it would be a postponement for four years and then referral.
And I guess I have to ask Counselor Arnold what the purpose of delaying it for four years is, or what is the intent to delay for four years? Is it to try and get the money to go where it's supposed to go, or, I don't understand.
Okay, so as I noted, I actually don't think that putting it in the general fund is a bad idea, but I do believe that our water and our sanitation, because I've spoke to both of them, I believe that they need a minute to rebound, and just by relying on their rate, rate increases, I don't think that's sufficient, and I believe these will actually help them take on projects. The reason I chose four years is because in speaking with sanitation and water, they have actually said that they would utilize it by alternating years. This would give them each two years to create projects and to use them funding for that. At a later date, in February of 2027, that was when I would like whatever council to actually assess, okay, are they solid, are they self-sustaining, and can we now move this to the general fund and update the law accordingly? But in my mind, right now, our, our actual current state is they're behind, and taking funding away actually only creates, you know, it doesn't help them build. This will help them build because they've never actually had access to it.
But I think we're missing a step here, because if we leave it as it is, then that, to me, says that we can continue using the money for the clean and safe instead of...
That's not what, that's actually, what the law currently says, is that it is to go to sanitation and water for infrastructural purposes.
Well, I understand that, but, but the way it has been interpreted in the past is the clean and safe has been using it through the sanitation funds. I mean, the sanitation funds have been the ones that have been housing the money, but instead of using it for their environmental purposes, they've been using it for the...
No, absolutely. But my actual thought is that I'm sure our city attorney would see fit to advise Janey to follow the actual ordinance accro- see fit to advise Janey to follow the actual ordinance accordingly and appropriately.
Yeah, and I, and I totally agree with you because I, I think.
Excuse me?
That the sanitation.
Counselor, and I'm sorry, have we gone into discussion without a second motion or did I miss somebody seconding?
Well, he's debating whether he will second.
I just need a clarification in order to, to be able to, to second it because I, I believe there's a, a step that we're missing unless our legal department can assure us that they can do it without going through the extra step. And if that is the case, then yes, I, I will second the motion.
So I feel it needs to be worded. I agree with Oropesa. Isn't that scary? Oh, my gosh.
So if I may, something else I learned from Senator, Senator Ivy Soto is that a second is not necessary if you start discussion.
That's true.
You started the discussion.
So, so I, I agree. It needs to be in the wherethes wherever, where it directs that money to and tells sanitation and water exactly what year they get that. Is that making sense? Because if you leave it open-ended, you're, you're in trouble. So, Mr. Hildebrandt would love to have it back at legal so it would get exactly worded the way it needs to be worded to move where it needs to move, is my opinion. So can I make a friendly amendment to your motion, asking it to go back to legal, now knowing that he knows what's in your mind and he kind of sees that the council is kind of in the same direction? So that's a friendly, friendly amendment to your motion?
Before we have a friendly amendment to this, might we just look if we, when the conversations we had last week when we went through our last, when we went through this, our last meeting, was that we'd already used a lot of money out of, out of the general fund to do the water fund, to do, to fix water issues. We're using by trash trucks out of, you know, out of the, for the trash, for the solid waste department, and we've already done the water fund already so we could get out of there with that big leak they had. So at some point in time, does it really matter if it's, if it's in the general fund? Then we can put, we can put the money where it is if you, and you also, there was a great deal of discussion about money in the, if you have monies that are recurring revenue in the general funds, that that could be used for salaries. As opposed, the other day, we were all criticized for salaries. So everything was so low, could that money be used for salaries? And when you do that, then is that only for the water and the sanitation department? Or is that going to be for everybody's? Everybody's used for, and all the other departments? Because sometimes when we have these funds that are dedicated and used, all you end up doing is, is trading a little bit here and there by, on how you appropriate money because it, you know, if you put all this in there, the, the general fund would give us, the council, the greatest flexibility to put the money in whatever it is, if it's reoccurring, or if we choose to put it in salaries, or if we choose to put it in, in equipment, or whatever we tend to put it in. That would give the council the greatest flexibility to use the money where the greatest needs are in our, in our county. Whether it could be for ambulances. What happens if we don't have enough money in the general fund to pay for the million foreign ambulances as we go along? I, I've heard Councilman Corn tell us an awful lot that we, we have a lot of shortcomings that we're still going to have to address. And that, that's why I start looking about arguing over putting it in, in four years from now to put it in somewhere for two years on each one, which maybe one gets three, maybe one gets, you know, maybe you put it three years in solid waste and one year in water, or three years in water, who knows how that's going to happen? That's always up to this council to make.
But, Mr. Mayor, I, well, actually, because I had those same questions, I, I actually had a conversation where I felt that this money, if we were going to actually move it, it should actually go and we should use it for rate increases for local workers. But when you actually start to read HB 479 from 2019, it actually, I, I felt that there was some limitations on what it could apply to and a lot of that focus was still infrastructure in water and sanitation. So, I mean, at this point, I, I did have a plan and so that's kind of why I'm trying to figure out the best way to do it, but still help them rebuild because, you know, we have some serious, serious concerns in those areas. And of course, my first thought was for the first year, because three million was actually required to come out of the budget for water, that water would forego this year's and then it would be moved, sorry, it would be moved to sanitation next year. And, and I can make an amendment because I have it written right here, a plan already, but, so.
Before we do that, we can have Council Lady Moore, would you care to ask your question? Then we have Councilman Corn on the list, so we'll let everybody have a shot at this.
Okay. My question kind of was, was if you were, they were saying that wherever it is right now is illegal, like where we were doing it incorrectly, why would we do that for four more years if they were saying that it wasn't distributed correctly or whatever?
No, that's kind of my point. Because it was appropriated incorrectly and not according to statute, we may want to spend the next four years actually following our ordinance and doing what we said we were going to do because I, I believe that we would have actually been able to utilize that funding for some of the major projects, pipelines, that type of stuff that we've had, water projects that we've had to take on. I'm just, I'm just proposing this as a way to actually help get our enterprise funds back on track, rebuild, and then reconsider it because for them to be self-sustaining is actually, it, it would actually help our general fund exponentially if we can get them self-sustaining. And I, and I believe we actually have people in place, great leaders in place in all those departments that have great ideas on how to get us back on track. They just need a little more help. The rate increases aren't going to help it quick enough and that's, that's why all I'm proposing is a suggestion in keeping them stable and allowing for that to happen. And then we actually go, okay, let's reassess this. But I, I'm open to suggestions.
So what you're more saying is saying no to this now, wouldn't that be just saying no to this or saying no to this with some amendments, so to speak? Or saying, saying yes to this with some amendments by adding some time and some verbiage about where the money should be spent correctly? Am I, is that what you're saying?
Well, actually, so here was my understanding. If you actually just let it, if you let this die, because what they're proposing is updating the, the previous ordinance which we should have been following. This is my understanding and please, Mr. Eintma, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we actually, if it dies, okay, then they will go on and hope, that's why I was asking Mr. Eintma to make sure that it's followed. But I don't know that we necessarily have to put like designations on it because we actually have, we actually have staff that can actually plan because they already have a plan of alternating years and what that looks like. And then that is kind of why I recommended, the only thing I felt we needed to stick to was getting it on the legal agenda and, because I wanted to make sure that it does come up for discussion at a later time because I believe there is merit to what is being presented. I just think we need to hold off and present it a later time, but, and get that on the calendar. No, because I may not be here. I can't guarantee that. So that's why I wanted to put it in record.
I, I do understand that part, but I didn't, like, I was like, I didn't know if we could, unless you did, we did it like on the last time, whatever, on the last meeting just before we're out so we can make sure this on, on the next one. I don't, didn't think we could do it in four years. But I understand what you're saying and I agree to, I think leaving the money there would be more beneficial to sanitation and then I think that is, the way was intended to be in the first place. How the money was coming out was, I guess, was a little awkward. I'm not going to say necessarily illegal because y'all keep saying everything was illegal, so a little awkward. And so I think, I don't, I don't mind that. I, I don't, I don't know about saying it four years, but I agree with, I actually agree with leaving the money the way it is right now.
Council Lady Moore, Councilman Corn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question. You, you haven't ruled if we've got a proper motion in front of the body. We've discussed lots of stuff. I, I would appreciate if we get back to, if we're gonna, if we're gonna start a amendment, this thing, we're supposed to be having a public hearing. We haven't heard anything from the public. I don't see a whole lot of public out there. I see a lot of city staff, but they are public. They, they reside here. They live in homes. They pay water bills. They pay sanitation bills. So I would just like a ruling from you real quick. If we have a motion or if we're going to go back onto the item in front of us, either way, then I have some more things to talk about.
Well, I, as far as on a ruling, right now, I have never heard Mr. Oropesa say whether he was going to second her motion or not. So you did say it, okay. Then Council Lady Arnold's motion is on the floor. Her, her motion is to.
Postpone till 2027.
Postpone until 2000, to February of 2027. You mean it has to go to there in 2000? We might not have a legal committee in 2027.
But you're gonna have one that day.
All right, okay. The motion is to refer item seven to the legal committee, would that, I guess that's, to the legal committee and for the committee to meet in 2000, in February of 2027. Is that correct? Well, we can discuss it. Is there any public, is there anyone in the public that would care to discuss sending this to 2027? Will there anybody be here in 2027? So there is no one that cares to discuss it, so the council, please, Council Lady Best.
So I'll agree with you, but it needs to be worded, saying that the money that is utilized, what year it goes to which department, not with just the directors. They may not be here. It needs to be down in the wherethes and what fours and where thou's or whatever, that it needs to go to the water department in 2024, it needs to go to sanitation in '25, so forth and so on. Because if you, since you're going so far out and if you don't put all your Ts and Is crossed, you're going to have counsel that's not going to comprehend and understand. Then you're going to have to say it's not going to be used for clean and safe because not necessarily that it was illegal, against the rules, whatever the case may be, we tagged it for clean and safe. That's, so it really wasn't, in my mind, again, I'm not legal, I don't know, in my mind, it wasn't against the rules. We tagged it for a specific use. We utilized it for that specific use. Now you don't want to use it for that specific use. You just want to put it in each enterprise fund. First one, water, second one, so they each have four years. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, Count, we've gone through this, we've beat this around the bush, and the motion on the floor is to refer this to the legal committee in 2000 and, in February of 2027. And that's the motion on the floor that was seconded. Before we start other motions, we shall, we need.
That was not a motion. That was a discussion on that motion. That discussion is, it needs to be worded properly so it gets done properly, not just a one thrown out there. So maybe it's a friendly amendment to that emotion if that's how you want to look at it. I'm not sure how Santa Fe does it.
Well, and we have just gone all around this thing, so it's best if you, if we have the motion that we have before us and we vote on it and then we can go off. If, if we keep doing this for a friendly amendment, I've had several people request to go, to hurry for other reasons. And so they would like a little break. And so that's what I was trying, is to get us through this so we can get through this item and go on down, take a break and go on to our agenda.
Well, I don't think it needs to be hurried, but okay.
Well.
This is something important.
So, okay, we have, mostly if we, in, in any event, it goes to legal in 2027. If anybody wants to change it, they can, we can put it back up before us again at the next, you know, come and ask somebody. I'm sure we could discuss it again.
But now you're leaving this open-ended. You're leaving this money open-ended because nobody knows what's going to happen with it. We hear about it tonight, but two months down the road, water and sanitation may go at it behind in the alley. I don't know. So you don't have it specifically targeted for what it needs to be. You're just saying we're going to refer it to February of 2027.
Ma'am, I, I'm sorry, I didn't make the motion. The motion that was made was to refer this to the legal committee in, in February of 2027. That is the motion that was made before us that was seconded over here. And so that's what we have to vote on.
And now I'm asking for a friendly amendment to that motion so we have the direct order of where it needs to go. Or completely table it, let it go back to legal and start all over at the bottom. That may be a better choice.
A motion to table is in order at any time, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
So if you would like to table it, if, if you want to table it, you get a second, then maybe we'll table.
I would like to make a motion to table number seven, ordinance 23-08, to go back to legal committee, which is Mr. Hildebrandt's, in July, to reword this correctly to fit the idea of what Counselor Arnold has.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a tabling motion. I want to get this over with as well. I second this. And I love to revisit items in legal. Well, on a motion. Call for the vote. On a motion to table.
Can't call for the question when you make the motion.
Yeah, you, you can't do that. You second it, that was fine. Councilman Corn, that's, is it on another, the motion to table is, is here before us. You don't have anything to say, so, okay, so if the clerk will call the roll on a motion to table and send to Judiciary Committee, or Legal Committee, okay.
Counselor Hildenbrandt?
Aye.
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Perry, are you on?
Aye.
Counselor Corn?
No.
Counselor Moore? Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Foster? Counselor Foster, are you still with us? Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Hildenbrandt?
He already voted. You need to counsel Arnold.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Okay. By a vote of nine in the affirmative and negative, this item seven has been referred to the Judiciary Committee.
We had, it's not nine, oh, it's nine one. Bob said no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Eight to one, because we didn't, Foster didn't vote, so by the eight, eight to one. Okay, sorry about that. So, okay, so that's there. We'll come. eight to one. Okay, sorry about that. So, okay, so that's there. We'll come back and we'll start on the next item fifteen. And as soon as we come back, we'll stand in recess for ten or fifteen minutes, ten minutes.
Mr. Mayor, your microphone was not on. I don't know what that motion was for.
The motion is to consider adoption of Resolution 2321 concerning the repeal Resolution 19-83 and Resolution 2072.
It puts the zoo back to being a free zoo and park rather than, uh, rather than, uh, for fee services. Okay, so, Councilman, uh, Mr. Matthews.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you very much. I'll run through this pretty quick. Resolution 1983 was passed in September, uh, thir- September of 2019, setting the cost recovery for the Roswell Zoo to the following levels. A five percent in 2020, a five percent in 21, a 25 percent in 22, and a 45 percent in 23. Currently on the 70/30 is projected for this, this year to be 7.3. Resolution 2072 was passed in December, the, on December the 10th of 2020, becoming effective on January the 1st of 2021, establishing the fees for the Roswell, or the Spring River Zoo. Resolution 2072 and Exhibit A was, set the fees and the charges to be identified for free days. Council has asked to consider Resolution 2321 repealing both Resolutions 1983, setting the cost recovery for the zoo, and Resolution 2072, which established the fees in Exhibit A. Expenses increased over the last four years at the zoo. As I've identified here from our finance department provided these numbers for me. In 2021, we had a $436,000 budget, and it's up to 2024, we're up to $1.4 million budget. Revenue for those same years, uh, 2021, $13,105, and 2022, $86,023, and $103,000 projected in 24. I'd made the statement earlier in committee meetings, and one of the resolutions that the, the numbers have gone down over the years. I pulled these numbers from our annual reports, uh, starting in 2018. We had 55, 51,000 people visit the zoo in 2018. 2019, 65,000 people visited the zoo. In 2020, of course, we had COVID, uh, we closed in March. They were able to do about 2,500 private tours during that time. 2021, when we started charging, January the 1st of 2021, we seen a, a visitation of 16,114 people. 2022, 18,548. These are numbers from our annual report that we produce for the council. Staffing increases. 2018, we, we were at 7.5 employees. 2019, 10. 2020, 10. 2021, 8. 2022, 23. 2019, or 2023, 19, and 2024, 10. I cut many of those, uh, positions out as I was working with the finance department early on on unfilled positions. I cut many of those unfilled positions out of the zoo. Another thing that I think is important to note is that the hours of operations are from 10 to 4, with the last ticket being sold at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So if you don't buy your ticket by 3 o'clock in the afternoon, basically, so that tells me the zoo almost closes at 3, because anything after 3, nothing, you can't go into the zoo, because at 4 o'clock, the gates are closed. Schools don't even let out till 3 o'clock. So basically, we're really limiting the time of the zoo. I found this photograph on you, on the internet. Uh, I'd actually found another one, but forgot to print it, so, and now I can't find it again. But as you can see here, previous hours at the zoo, at one time was from 9 o'clock to 6 o'clock in the afternoon. And they were closed on, I can't read it from here, closed on Tuesdays. One of the other signs I've, uh, couldn't find again, when I was a kid, that, that zoo was open till sunset. Or so, it closed at sunset. So, the way I see it, we've limited the access to the zoo, less people are attending the zoo, our hours are less at the zoo, and we've got more staff at the zoo. So I'm asking council to consider repealing the, the fees at the, the Spring River Zoo, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Matthews. Is there anyone in the audience who care to speak in favor of this? Yes, ma'am.
You're familiar with who I am, correct? So I do work at the zoo.
You have to identify yourself for the record.
I'm Liz Foster.
Your address, please.
1410 West Tilden. So, the zoo has been free since last month. I don't know who is aware and not aware of that, but ever since guest services was pulled out, the zoo's free. So I don't know why we're talking about this. There's no one there to take money. Why is it a problem now? Why are we even questioning this?
The reason is that there's some statutes on, or there's some ordinances on the books that set up what the rates are, and this is, uh, this is clarifying the ordinances and putting us back, everybody, everything back.
Okay, now based on the signs that you had up there, so we work from 7:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. The reason that they had that set for 3:00 p.m. was because we still have to get animals fed, and we have to get everybody situated. So as zookeepers, we do have a job to do, and it takes roughly, we give people an hour to come through. So if we're trying to clear the park when someone's just starting out, that doesn't make it very fair for them, correct?
No.
Hence that reason. Now here's the other problem. Who's gonna pay us to stay and work all those extra hours?
Well, we'll have to figure that out, our budget. To work the hours that you're gonna have to work. I mean, we'll figure that out, we'll, we'll get through it. Council Lady Best.
So, from what I understand, last month you went ahead and pulled guest services, is that right, Mr. Matthews?
No, ma'am, I did not pull guest services. We did not have the staff, uh, for guest services. So there wasn't anybody at the gate to take the money to, if somebody came to the zoo. So it was open. We went over there ourselves several times, and there, or a couple times, and there was nobody at the gate. We just walked in along with the rest of the people that were walking in, the, the school bus from Tatum and all the children.
I think the point that I'm making, you, you said that you cut a few of the jobs or you're working on it or not filling them or whatever. So the month before that, we had people able to take the tickets. Then, when we advertised and passed that, then we didn't have the people to take the tickets, which, in my mind, as a counselor, it hasn't been voted on yet whether we were gonna stop that service. Am I correct, or am I doing this backwards?
Yes, ma'am. I, uh, Mayor Jennings, Members of the Council, Councilperson Best, you are correct. Uh, so you have not voted on that. We have not, uh, removed the fees. Uh, what we have had is some resignations, uh, in recent days, not only amongst guest service, but zookeepers. And so those positions have not been filled at this point. Uh, what has been filled, uh, is a maintenance position, and some grounds, uh, has been opened, um, to try and address the maintenance and grounds issues that we've seen over at the zoo, uh, since I first visited it and spent four hours out there in March.
So, now I'm being told at one point that we have homeless that have come in since the gates are now open, and I believe one of the zookeepers has been threatened with a knife. So again, I am worried about our employees, and maybe I'm the only one, I don't know, I hope not. Um, along with being worried about our employees, our customers that we serve, our visitors, our animals. Again, I'm an animal person, been an animal person my whole life. And I'm worried about this. I don't want the zoo to close. We do need to do a better job if making it smaller is the ticket, fine. As we know, the carousel is the most precious thing out there, since the train is dead. The carousel is the most precious thing because it was donated to us. It can be picked up and moved, if necessary, maybe to the Great Blocks program where it will be utilized and seen in downtown, if that's a deal. So you need to get together, figure out what you're gonna do, and, uh, in my world, you know, either do it or get off the pot. So I'm, I'm just, I'm disappointed that this moved before council voted on it, because anything else, you would have pulled Parks people over there to take ticket money or whatever. But this is just a throw up and, no, we're not gonna do it, we know we're not gonna do it. So, yep, we've done the hearing and we're done, and council didn't get a chance to vote. So that's my opinion, it's just.
Well, and I think, uh, Councilwoman, uh, just to be fair, uh, there was no directive to not collect fees. Uh, there, there has been none. Uh, matter of fact, it was a surprise to Mr. Matthews and I both, the last time we, well, the last two times we visited the zoo, uh, that there was a table, uh, where guest services would normally sit by our tough shed, uh, next to the eight-foot chain link fence that runs down the middle of the park. Uh, and there was a chair, and they were both folded up, uh, leaning against the tree, both times that we last visited the zoo. Uh, so again, uh, we were shocked and surprised. Uh, we were also shocked and surprised to see the fence down, uh, near the animals, uh, at one point.
So if they weren't directed, is a mysterious UFO alien coming in and doing the work? I mean, it's that time of year, they're starting to come out with their little antennae. So something in the regime is falling apart, and we either need to get control of it, or let it completely fall apart.
Well, uh, we've gotta brag on our people too, and, and since we've made some, uh, reorganizations over there, uh, we have certainly seen that eyesore of a pond, uh, cleaned up, and there were 18, approximately 18 staff, uh, from our parks. I'm nicknaming those guys the A Team, uh, 'cause they knock it out of the park wherever they go, uh, whether it's downtown Main Street in the mornings, uh, no cigarette butts to be found. Uh, those guys are all over it, whether it's over at our park and zoo, uh, getting there early in the morning, uh, removing all that dead brush and debris, and pulling up, uh, trees and, and all of those things, and hauling off literally truckloads and trailer loads. Uh, those guys worked their tail off, and, uh, couldn't be more proud of them. Uh, we got, finally got the grass mode at the zoo, uh, which was kinda nice as well. Uh, again, I don't know if that was specifically Parks, uh, or if that was the grounds person that's assigned to the zoo, uh, at that moment in time, but very proud of all of them, yes, ma'am.
I don't have a, a problem with any of our employees. They work harder than anybody I know, because they're the foundation of this city.
Absolutely.
Their direction was incorrect, and the pond has been a cluster from day one. That's my personal opinion, because I've dealt with their ponds and windmills my whole life, pumps, whatever. That's been a cluster from day one. I'm getting off the subject here. Tickets were stopped, fence was down before the council voted on it, so we're not stepping in the cracks. Well, you just said there was a fence down.
There, no, there's an eight-foot fence that goes right through the middle of the park.
Correct.
The children's park, splits off the swing sets from the rest of the slide.
So I'll stop now while I'm, before I get up and get nasty.
And Councilor Corn, I'd just add to the, for any of our facilities, whether it be the golf course, City Hall, the fire department, wherever. If we have homeless, they're coming and creating that issue, we call the police department. So I'd be interested to know if our Park staff or Zoo staff reported that to the police department. And especially concerning to me is for, for me to hear tonight that somebody had a knife pulled on them. I hope to see a police report on that tomorrow, and so that I can follow up on that to make sure that that was reported to the authorities, and it's been dealt with. So I'll follow up on that and let you know.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Councilman, more than Councilman Parry, than Councilman Orpressa.
Um, thank you, Mayor. I have been a long proponent, you know, of not charging for the zoo to begin with, so I'm not really struggling with this part. And I, 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 I do have an issue with, you know, people just, but that's not on you. That people just decide they're not gonna work at the, take the tickets anymore, that's not on you. If they don't call you and tell you we're not gonna work, or not, you know, that's not on you. But, um, I do remember a report, I think we were at General, where's General Services? Where they were talking about how much money they were spending with the lack of people, the numbers, how the numbers had went down, and how much more it was costing, um, for salaries and for stuff when the people weren't, you know, showing up at this, you know, weren't showing up. Um, and I think you said the numbers went down, you were saying the 10 for 2024, you were, you were just estimating that number based on the amount of, uh, positions unfilled, is that where you, that's where that 24 came from, where you were es- that 10? That you were estimating by not, the, the jobs that are open, opening, you just wouldn't fill, that's where you got that number from, right?
Well, when these slides were put together, we had 10 people at that time. We've lost one, maybe two, since this slide was done for legal committee. This was referred back to legal at the last council meeting.
Um, so, and I, I don't want to use, especially say the homeless thing, because it was free for all those years, and if there was a homeless problem, there's gonna be a homeless problem, whether it's free or not free. Um, we just have a, you might as well admit it, we just have a homeless problem in the city. And so, um, don't, I don't think that's a reason, uh, for it to be free is because of the homeless. I still think it, it could be free, and the gate could open, and the gate could just close at closing time, you know, and it could still be free. And, so I, I don't have a problem with it being free. I just think that, I understand that it costs money to, um, to, for the upkeep, and honestly, seeing, paying. I saw a few things different. I didn't see like no majority thing that still wants me to think I wanna pay for it. I saw some, they have been doing some upkeep, and I've seen some things, you know, so I'm not saying that's not horrible. I still would like to, you know, I think I'm putting the things, we need to, we need to get the train going back. That's something, you gotta have something different. That was what the zoo was about, was the, was the, uh, the rocket, the train, and the, and fair. I mean, I wouldn't even really see the animals, once you've seen them, you've seen them, but, um, so those three things were the reason why we went to the, why we went to the Pepper, I mean, I mean, Spring, Spring River, Spring River Zoo. So, um, I don't know, uh, Councilman Best, I know she's upset about some of those things, 'cause she's always, you know, she's a proponent for no, no shirt, skin in the game? She's a proponent of no skin in the game, if they ain't got, you know, if there's nothing, you don't have nothing to, you know, to win. But I think there was nothing wrong with having a free zoo. Uh, especially we keep the other ones open, there's one free thing in town, it won't, I wanna say it won't kill us, but, um, they'll be, we'll have, like with all the rest of the money situations as the city is having, we'll have to make some adjustments. Um, I don't, I don't know, this young lady here, I'm, I, I kinda, she may get mad at me, but I, I detected a little attitude, and I'm not sure, is it because your salary was cut or something? 'Cause I detected, you seem like you're a little, you're upset. Would it, yes, yeah. Did someone, did something happen that you, you just seemed like you were a little upset? So I just wanted to know if there's something that he did, or the city did, that made, that make you, that made you seem a little upset, or is it just the way it came off?
May I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm upset, because even when we had a guest services there, I don't care if the zoo's free, or if you charge, you know, a thousand dollars. I don't care. I care about the fact that my safety and my coworker's safety is an issue, because we are doing our job. Thank you, Chad, for admiring grounds and that we don't do anything there, I appreciate that. And the fact that we are busy doing our jobs, we do mow, 'cause we have to mow the enclosures and the weed eating. Obviously, we cannot pay attention to what the public is doing if we're doing our jobs. And so it does become a safety concern. No, I didn't file a police report, because the gentleman put his knife away. He was actually very nice about it, and he walked out the gate. I made sure he walked out the gate. So no, I didn't file a police report, I just watched the man leave the park. So I do have a bit of attitude because of safety concerns. I brought this up at the meeting last month. Has nothing to do with anything else. Again, I don't care if the zoo is free, I don't care about any of that except our safety.
Ma'am, can I ask you a question? If you didn't, if you don't report those things, how can they make it safer? How do they know there was unsafe for you, if you did not say something to the people that could do something about it?
Because we were closing.
Just because you were closing?
We were closing, and we were all still trying to get people out of the park, still trying to get it, animals put in their other enclosures, trying to get everybody else fed, get everything shut down. As zookeepers, we still have a lot to do at the end of the day, besides trying to get everybody out of the park and all of that.
So what could the, what could the city do to make you feel, make it, make you feel safer? What are they not doing?
Can I, am I out of order? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
What could they do to make you feel safer? Our employees are important.
We kind of need some sort of a monitoring system, and I don't know what that is, and I don't know what the city council has planned for us. But there has to be some sort of accountability for people coming and going. 'Cause I've been at that zoo at night, and it's very dark, especially on the other side, and there are a lot of places to hide, a lot. And so anybody can walk in. If you're watching people with their kids, and you see a family get out of their car, that's great. You can account for that family if you see them. But then when all these cars are gone, you basically assume that everybody's out of the park, but that may not necessarily be true.
Has that always been an issue?
As long as I've been here, no, because we've always had someone basically keeping track. So like I said, it's not that it's, this zoo is free, we're charging, we're not charging, that's not the point. I think that whole point was lost somewhere in translation, because it's accountability. Keeping track of who's coming and going. Are you finally understanding where I'm coming from?
So, I think, I think we were understanding that the first time around, uh, and you don't have, uh, security per se at this point, is that correct?
Correct. I mean, I'm a great bouncer, but I can't do everything.
But you have security protocols where you go through each night and check the zoo for, for personnel? And so my understanding is, uh, from the past, we didn't have dedicated security at the zoo, but the personnel would do a security check of the zoo as well. Now, what's a little different in, uh, in recent, uh, months and weeks is that we have talked to the police department. Uh, we have talked to, uh, the, the new, um, director over the zoo, uh, Mr. Burris, uh, and we are looking at security personnel specific to the zoo. Uh, we are also contemplating, uh, increased patrol and service aides rotating through the zoo. Uh, so those are new things, uh, which I don't think you had before. But again, my understanding is there's some security protocols where you do go through the zoo, or somebody is supposed to go through the zoo before we close, uh, each evening, is that correct?
We do the best we can.
That's fair. Full staff of zookeepers? A full staff of zoo, zookeepers?
Of zookeepers.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Right. And what we were looking at, uh, in previous years was going from 7.5 FTE to 8 FTE to 10 FTE to night, no, to 23 FTE to 19 FTE. And we're at, currently at 14.5 FTE the last, I think it was last month when I had him run the report for me.
Okay.
Full-time personnel.
So why can't we convey this? Why can't we have communication? Because none of this was told to us.
Okay. And that's what your, your director is there for. My understanding, he has staff meetings with you, uh, and the, the people there at the park, is that right?
Our director has been having to do our educating job this week.
Excuse me.
The speaker, please. The mic.
Oh, please.
You can't hear, and, and, you know, a lot of this are just management issues.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, can, can you guys have a little gathering, Mr., uh, and y'all have that conversation? I don't think our city council made, I just wanted to know why you were upset, and I just, I feel like knowing why the staff has their issues is fine, but I still feel like you have to go to the right people to get the right things done, and so, and I don't know if you And so, and I don't know if you felt like that didn't happen, or you didn't get a chance to do it, or you didn't feel comfortable. I don't know what that situation was, but I just don't think this, the conversation that we're having now is, 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 is not the space for that. I just wanted to make sure you were heard, and I appreciate, you know, your conversation. Um, but just go punch that one, I mean, pump, dump that one right there in the forehead in the blue shirt right there, and you'll, you'll, you'll get, you'll get it done. He'll take care of it. But just, I think you should go, I think y'all should have a meeting with the zoo people and see what's going on, see where their safety issues are, see, see, you know, what, there's a difference when there's 20 staff and then when there's 10 staff. So you have to see, once all the people stop dropping, then we need, there's some changes need to be made, so.
So I don't follow any of this. So my question, and this is my last question. Are we as city employees allowed to send out emails or make phone calls and say, "Hey, can we talk to so-and-so? Would you come talk to us?" Are we allowed to do that?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, of course you are.
You can talk to anybody.
You can talk to any of us. You can talk to him, you can email the council if you have a concern. You, yes, ma'am, you can do that. And if you go to him and your answer's not done, then you go to the next person. You, yes, ma'am, that is within your right.
Okay. I'm a fan of going above heads. Thank you.
Well, let's, let's follow the chain of command so no one's offended. No, just kidding. I'm just, all right. I'm, 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 I'm done. I'm sorry if I caused some extra issues.
We have Councilman Perry and then Councilman Orpressa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. Uh, number one, I, I'm still not understanding. I would like to know who gave the directive for there to be no admissions taken at this, for the last month?
Uh, Council, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Perry, it did not come from administration. Uh, I can only assume that, uh, because of the short staffing over there, that maybe the director just felt like he didn't have anybody to cover that gate, and there was nobody there.
Okay, uh, um, a couple of other questions. Part of my questionings from last, uh, from the last meeting, I don't think were addressed, but I, I, if, I don't know if it's possible for y'all to put the slides back up for us to see, but I saw the, I heard the numbers for, uh, the financial numbers for, uh, 2020, 21, 22, but I didn't hear, uh, 16, 17, 18 nights, and we're talking about how we've gone severely up in what we're utilizing out there financially, but I didn't see any of the previous numbers. Were they in there?
No, sir. No, I started at 2021 on all, all my information. On the finances.
Sorry, I'm walking outside. Y'all can hear me a little better. Someone walked in. Uh, my, my reservation with that is the fact that I think that we all know that in 2020, 2021, we were in COVID, and, and naturally those numbers are going to be low because we cut departments significantly. So I, I, I need to know that this massive rise in our finances at the, the zoo is, eh, the way I'm hearing it being approached is that our numbers are going up drastically, uh, but, you know, but, but the, the, the finance is not working, when I, I would like to think that a more appropriate number that I need to be judging by would be at 2016, 17, 18, 19 versus, uh, 2020, 21, because those were COVID years when we cut all departments significantly. So that was part of my reasoning for aspiring for this to be heard this, this week, is so that we would know, have a, have a better, um, understanding there.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Perry, and I apologize, I missed, I had to miss last, uh, month's council meeting and to get to present, but to the best, my recollection, and you, I recall a, uh, council workshop. Uh, I do not remember what year it was. Mr. Nahar may remember because he was part of that conversation. But at that time, we were spending $700,000 a year at the zoo. So if you take that number from, and I don't remember, I think, uh, uh, Mr. Polisec was the city manager at the time. If you take that number, it's, it's almost, or it has doubled since that year, and I don't recall what year that was.
April 2018.
April of 2018 was when we had that meeting, and the, the budget at the zoo was, uh, $700 and some thousand dollars a year.
And Councilmember Perry, I could, this is Chad.
Perfect. That's what I wanted to hear.
So Councilmember Perry, this is Chad. I, I can also confirm for you that, uh, I've seen numbers. They were in our budget packet, uh, fiscal year 19. We have 7, 7.5 FTE at the zoo.
And that, that's the, that, that's the kind of data that I needed, and that does help me significantly. I appreciate that. I, I think that, uh, if, if we're not charging at the zoo currently, and if we haven't for a month, I think this is a mute, I, I, I can't have an argument. I can't have an argument because I've always said that a law that is not enforced is not a law. An ordinance that's not being enforced now is, is not an ordinance, uh, and, and therefore would need to be cleaned up. I do want to caution us, moving forward, you know, there's a lot of things that we do that do not make money. Uh, that carousel, we subsidize the carousel. The train, we subsidize the train, and I've not heard anyone fighting that we, um, you know, stop charging for either of those. You know, we, we subsidize the, the, uh, golf course. We're about to vote on our next one to up the fees at the golf course. Uh, you know, there's a subsidization there, and I, I, uh, we subsidize public transportation. There's a lot of things we deal with with subsidies at the swimming pool. Are we going to make the swimming pool now free and the, and the public transportation free? So I think we have to be careful, but I think that my argument pretty much goes mute if we are not currently charging at this time. So, so I go with any more comments.
Thank you, Councilman Perry. Councilman Orpressa.
There, Mr. Mayor, you know, it's getting late, so I'm just going to pass.
Thank you, thank you. Councilman Orpressa, are there any further comments? Seeing none on a motion by, uh, Councilman Hildebrand, seconded by Councilman Korn for item 15, uh, resolution 23-21. Uh, consider the adoption of resolution 23-21 to consider repealing resolutions 19-83 and resolution 20-72 to convert the Spring River Zoo back to a free zoo and park. Uh, if they, that's the motion on the floor and made by Councilman Hildebrand, seconded by Councilman Korn. Uh, if the clerk will call the roll.
Councilor Hildebrand?
Aye.
Councilor Orpressa?
Yes.
Councilor Perry?
Aye.
Councilor Korn?
Yes.
Councilor Moore? Councilor Halverson?
Yes.
Councilor Sanchez?
Yes.
For the record, Barry Foster left at 8:15. Councilor Best?
Yo.
Councilor Arnold?
Yes.
By a vote of eight in the affirmative and one in the negative, uh, item 15, resolution 23-21 has passed. Next, we have, uh, item 16, resolution 23-22. Consider adoption of the resolution 23-22 to restructure and increase the rates and fees at Nancy Lopez Golf Course at Spring River. Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I move that, uh, we consider adoption of resolution 23-22 to restructure and increase all rates and fees at Nancy Lopez Golf Course at Spring River. Further attached, veteran, the draft of the resolution.
We have a motion by Councilman Hildebrand, seconded by Councilman Korn. Okay, next we have, uh, that would be Eric, Mr., uh, Mr. Burris and Mr. Chavis, please.
Evening, Mayor, Council. So, resolution, I'm here to present resolution 23-22. It's going to be the daily rates. So the daily rates, the daily rates have not been changed since 2014, 2015. Uh, there are too many different types of memberships. Some would, which don't work for our current POS system. Um, there are no rates in place for tournaments, high schools, leagues, twilights, et cetera. And with the new golf carts we're getting, we're going to be having a Yamaha track, I mean, yeah, Yamaha Track GPS screens put in the carts, so we need to increase that rate. All right. Annual rates, proposed fees with price increase of 5%. All annual memberships, just 5%. We do want to add a senior single anytime membership for $477, a senior couple anytime membership for $595, and a junior membership of $150. Monthly membership fees and price increase, again, 5% is what we're looking for. Uh, senior single, we want to add $75, and a senior couple of $105, and that's for the monthly fees. We would like to change the membership to calendar year. Instead of it being one year from the purchase date, um, we would like to change it to calendar year. We want, obviously, these rates to go into effect immediately, but we want to get it on a, on a calendar year, so we'll prorate, it'll probably happen in 2025. If we prorate everything to 2025, then we'll have control of increases or decreases or anything like that at, with everybody, instead of having to prorate anything from, uh, making the corrections and all that stuff. Um, proposed green fees with increase, all daily green fees will increase $1. Uh, junior green fee, right now, there's two different ones. So we would like to just have one green fee of $8.50 for them any time of the week. Um, annual twilights, right now, there's no twilight at all, so we'd like to add twilight green fees. Three hours before sunset, once twilight starts, no nine-hole rate, and that fee would be $15. Proposed special green fees with price increase. So right now, we have Senior Day, which is on Wednesdays, Ladies' Day on Thursdays, and City Championship, which is currently $12. We just want to increase that $1 to $13. Uh, the new fees, which I'll go over the next slides, we don't have any, uh, fees for tournament fees, uh, league fees, or high school golf team fees. So we'll start off with tournament fees. Trying to offer a package of $25 per golfer, and this is to bring fundraising golf tournaments in, and this will include green fee, cart fee, range balls, events set up, and scoring. The way the breakdown would be, it'd be a $12 green fee, $11 cart fee, and $2 range ball fee. And again, that's to bring people into the golf tournament where we'll be able to make money off of, uh, sign them food and beverages, uh, them coming in and purchasing items in the pro shop and stuff like that. Uh, proposed league rates. So leagues are on weekdays, 5:00 PM or later, which we have Taco Tuesday, which is getting big. We have 30 teams the other night. Um, it's nine holes, but we're looking to give them a special rate of $5 for the green fee and $7 for the cart fee. Right now, they're paying full green fees in carts, and, I mean, it's a little pricey when they got to pay that, plus the entry fee for the event, so. Proposed high school. So as of right now, there's no record of what the high school fees are. I spoke with the coaches. They said, uh, $1,500 is what they've been paying. I say we keep it the same. $7.50 goes to membership, $7.50 goes to range balls. Um, with this, we need to limit the number of players on the team, 15 for the boys, 15 for the girls for each school. Um, it's just right now, during golf season, there's no people, there's no, uh, room on the driving range for, uh, the public to hit balls. On the golf course, it's very hard for the public to get out there and play because the high schools are out there, so if we limit that to 15, I think that's a good number. Um, with this new, uh, fee, I would let the high school teams play year-round and hit balls, but limit that to only five per team. Those ones that are really serious about playing, most of them, they just play during golf season and that's it, and then they don't bring out their clubs again until the next one. So if we limit that to five per team, that'd be great, but also we want them to help us. Maybe with the junior camps, we're going to get started, um, clean pick the driving range and days like that. Uh, proposed cart fees price increase. We're getting the new carts, like I said, June. Supposed to get them this month. If not, we're going to get them next month. We'll roll over, but that's another story. Um, the new carts will have Yamaha Track GPS screens installed. Uh, this screen will give the golfer yardage to the front, middle, and back of the green, keep score on the screen. We can type messages from the golf shop and let the golfers know if they're behind or whatever it is. We can put advertisements up on the screen. Uh, the carts will shut off. This is the big one, when they drive in a restricted area. So we put up geo-fencing around the greens, around the tees, and if they drive too close, it'll shut off. So to cover this increase with the Yamaha Track, it's a monthly fee. We're going to go up $1.50 to cover the yearly, uh, cost of the Yamaha Track. Bag storage. Uh, right now, we have no fee for all the players who keep their golf bags in the facility right now. Um, we're looking, we cleaned it up a lot from what it was. I mean, it looks good in there now. We have spots available, but I think we need to charge $120 for the year. Um, and disclaimer, so golf course discretion, the golf course manager along with the director have the ability to change merchandise pricing at any time up to, but not exceed 20%. And that's all I have. I stand for questions.
Questions? Uh, Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Eric, you've done a great job. This is the fourth time you made this presentation. You've got it down really good now.
Thank you. I've been dreaming about it.
Thank you.
Did you want to refer it back to legal?
No.
Well, I, there's, oh, Councilman Orpressa.
Back to legal? We had no idea why it was referred to legal to begin with.
I just rule on the motion somebody makes. It's not my fault. Oh, any further comments? The, the only thing I wondered about is it, would it be better to start your, your golf, your yearly rate at the beginning of July rather than Christmas? I mean, at the end of the year, at the beginning of the year, uh, seems like people don't have a lot of money. They'd have more money to spend in July than they would right around Christmas or New Year's Day. I mean, you just have to start it off like now, you know, for the next year. Uh, I mean, that's the only thing. I, I just wondered if you started July versus the second half of the year or whatever, if that would be, people have more disposable income, but that's up to you. You decide what you want to do. Council Lady Moore?
The, um, the yearly thing that you said, it started going from day to day, I mean, from day to, to start, and what, what's the benefit of doing the yearly? Did you, I heard you tried, did you say something about prorating and doing some extra kind of thing?
So yes, if we could prorate it and get everybody started to where everybody ends their membership December of 2024, we prorate it there, and then we start the, in 2025, um, January 1, everybody needs to pay their membership then, and it's on a calendar year. The reason we do that is because if we do need to increase rates or we need to decrease rates or something happens, everybody can do it at the same time, instead of some of them who have already purchased. If I purchased it the day before you made a change, I got a whole year where I didn't get, you know what I mean, where I didn't have to pay the extra that other people are having to pay or anything like that. So it kind of gets everybody on the same cycle. If we want to make any changes, we can make it, and January 1 is when that change comes in, and everybody's on it.
But at that same time, January 1 is a little odd for people, you know, January 1, that's, I kind of like him. That's how our funding year goes. You just had Christmas. What are you making that face for? You just had to buy the wife all kind of stuff. What are you making that face for? You know, January 1 is a little, little difficult for some people. And our funding year, I was thinking, because our funding for the, and our budget goes in July, so maybe that's why, that's when he said July would not, would be a bad July to July. Then June 31st, you know, instead of December 31st, like everybody's normal kind of thing, so. Yeah, I mean, just kind of think about that idea, you know, January 1, sometime it's not always a time for all the fees to go up either.
Thank you, uh, Council Lady Moore. Uh, seeing no one else to talk, we've had, um, we have a motion by Councilman Hildebrand, seconded by Councilman Korn to, uh, for a due pass on resolution 23-22, uh, to restructure the, in, the fees and increase the rates at Nancy Lopez Golf Course at the Spring River. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilor Hildebrand?
Aye.
Councilor Orpressa?
Yes.
Councilor Perry?
Aye.
Councilor Korn?
Yes.
Councilor Moore?
Yes.
Councilor Halverson?
Yes.
Councilor Sanchez?
Sanchez.
Councilor Best?
Yes.
Councilor Arnold?
Yes.
By a vote of nine in the affirmative, none in the negative. Item 16, resolution 23-22 has duly passed. Next, we have item.
Thank you.
Let's see that.
29.
All right. We're on 29, yeah. Item, uh, 29, resolution 23- We're on twenty-nine, yeah. Item, uh, twenty-nine, Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-seven. A resolution with the City of Roswell amending the budget for fiscal year June thirtieth to twenty-three by, third, June thirtieth of twenty-three by increasing revenue and offsetting, offsetting expenses, and this is for the JAG grant. Is that right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm Lieutenant Smith with the Police Department. Counselors, how are you all tonight? There's one more slide for this that'll explain it real quick. We did a real good job cleaning up eighteen, nineteen, twenty grants. We got all that cleaned up, spent. Danny Davies did a good job with us, but this year, we got notified, we never drew down and received the twenty seventeen grant. That grant is worth that twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and four dollars. The note with that said, if we don't have it and have it spent by June twenty-third, we lose it, and it goes back to the government. So, we're here because we're asking that that be deposited in our JAG account, in the vehicle account, and we're able to spend it in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, we have, now, we have an explanation. We need a motion for Councilman, uh, Korn.
I was wondering when you're gonna get around to doing that.
Yeah, we, we're all right. We, we just, we, he-
We hadn't done anything to oil tonight anyway, so.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution twenty-three twenty-seven to redo the contracts for the city police department.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Korn, second by Council Lady Halverson. Was that right?
Yes.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This really has nothing to do or not the certain topic here, so. But this has to do with budget. And in our last special council meeting, it was brought up by some council members that they reduced the budget by thirty-four million. I want to bring to light some of those statements that were made at that meeting, which I believe need to be clarified so that there's no misrepresentation to the citizens. We've looked at this budget, and I went back and I looked at budgets, budgets, not actual expenses, but budgets from nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. And no way could there have been an operational thirty-four million dollar cut, which is what was said. No way. So, that is a total misrepresentation to you citizens of this community. For twenty, for nineteen, our total revenues, which are grocery receipts and all grants, were seventy-seven million dollars. That year, twenty nineteen, total expenses, this comes right off the city website. So, if anybody wants to go look at these numbers, I didn't make them up. For twenty nineteen, our total expenses were a hundred and forty million dollars, which are personnel expenses, operating expenses, and capital outlay. For twenty, all revenues, a hundred percent of revenue, not just GRT, a hundred percent of revenues, no matter where it came from, was ninety-one million. Expenses, a hundred and thirty million. Twenty-one, total revenue, eighty-seven million. Twenty-one, total expenses, a hundred and one million. Twenty-two, total revenue, a hundred and thirteen million, expenses, a hundred and twenty-eight million. Twenty-three, revenue, a hundred and nineteen million, expenses, a hundred and forty-eight million. So, what caused that? Yeah, there was a reduction in total expense between twenty and twenty-one of twenty-nine million dollars, but let's not fool anyone. That reduction was not through actual budget reductions, but was capital outlay reductions, which has nothing to do with operations of the city except for improvements. That outlay for twenty was forty-one million dollars. Capital outlay for twenty-one was twenty-five million dollars. A reduction of capital outlay of fifteen million dollars. Is this a, really a reduction of the city budget? No. This reduction has nothing to do with the operating costs of the city, but has everything to do with items such as the Recreation Aquatic Center, which was budgeted for seventeen million dollars in twenty, in twenty nineteen, four million dollars in twenty twenty, and nothing in twenty-one. The water capital outlay for twenty, fiscal year twenty, was sixteen million. Capital outlay for twenty-one was five million. A reduction of ten million. Some may believe this is a reduction in the budget, but I for one do not. These are, these were improvements, so let's not fool everybody and say that we reduced the budget by thirty-four million dollars. No way. And how did that reduction take place? You borrowed money. That's what happened. You borrowed money for the aquatic center, you borrowed money for the waste treatment facility, and now we're paying for it. But don't tell the citizens of this community that you reduced the budget by thirty-four million dollars when in fact you did not. And I'll stand on, these are facts, and these are not made up by me at all. So, and the other thing I wanted to bring to your attention, another statement was said that we were growing government. At the end of fiscal year twenty twenty, and these numbers came from our H R department, so you can get them from their cell, there were five hundred and sixty-eight full-time equivalents. In twenty, during fiscal year twenty-one, there were forty-three employees who opted to take an advan- advantage of a buyout, which the city offered a way to reduce the staff. This buyout cost the city seven hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. I don't know if you council members know that, that it costs you seven hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars for that buyout. Well, if there were five hundred and sixty-eight, less the forty-three buyout, that means the full, the, uh, there'd be five hundred and thirty-five full-time employees. However, at the end of twenty-one, there was five hundred and seventy-two full-time employees, which is an actual increase of employees. Was the additional expense of seven hundred and sixty-two thousand a good idea for the city? Is this a good idea for the employees who took advantage of the offer? Uh, yep, I would say it's a great thing for them. There were some people that took that opt-out, that were on the, had been on the, employed by the city by four months, some people up to twenty-seven years. Some of those that opted out, and I'm not picking on anybody, but these are facts. You can see them. You can't run a city without a fire chief. You can't run a city without a deputy fire chief. And those are two of the, two of the places that opted out. You can't operate a city, we are now, but we're in the motion to change that. You can't operate the city without our Community Development Director or Planning and Zoning. That person opted out. So, these are things that I think should have been brought in. I don't know if it's brought to the full council's attention, but we can't talk about that. Let's not linger on that analysis anymore. Yes, it is and was approved by the council. The fiscal twenty-one budget called for five hundred and sixty full-time employees. That was on the budget. You all approved it. The fiscal twenty-two budget was called for six hundred and fifty-five full-time employees. You can go out there on its website and look at the budget. City government is growing, but it was approved. Who's to blame for that? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Some interesting numbers. Okay, we have on this-
Anything for me? Has nothing to do with you, but has a lot to do with being honest to the citizens of this community.
As long as you don't need me to do something.
Yeah, no, you, it's not your fault. Okay, so we have, are there any questions of Officer Smith on this, uh, two thousand and seventeen JAG grant award? Seeing none, we have a, a motion by Councilman Korn, second by Council, Council Lady Halverson. Item twenty-three dash twenty-seven, Resolution, uh, amending the budget for fiscal year two thousand, June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, be increased by the revenue and the offsetting expenses. If the clerk would call the roll.
Council Hildebrand?
Aye.
Council Orobesa?
Yes.
Council Perry?
Aye, aye.
Council Korn?
Yes.
Council Moore? Council Halverson?
Yes.
Council Sanchez?
Yes.
Council Best? Council Arnold?
Yes.
By a vote of nine in the affirmative, but none in the negative. Item Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-seven, uh, increasing the budget for the JAG grant and the, adjusting the off, the revenue and the offsetting revenues has duly passed. By a vote of nine in the affirmative, none in the negative. Next, we have item thirty, uh, Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-eight, uh, supporting the City of Roswell's transfer of the Great Blocks Main Street Grant Program to the county. Councilman Korn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we adopt Resolution twenty-three twenty-eight, to transfer the Great Blocks Main Street Grant to Chavas County. This actually does two things, Mr. Mayor. It changes the location, moves the whole thing south of, or, excuse me, north of Second Street, and it's gonna, uh, benefit the county because they've got some property that, that is available, and, and it'll just make a nicer deal. It's adjacent to a larger parking lot. I think it'll make for, for a better venue.
Second.
Okay, well, a motion by Councilman Korn, second by Council Lady Arnold. Okay, Mr. Gold, did you want to say anything else on this?
Certainly, Mayor, members of the council. As you know, uh, back in two thousand and twenty, the City of Roswell pledged its financial support in the amount of twenty percent of a project match for the Main Street Roswell Great Blocks Grant, which the granting agency at that is New Mexico Main Street. And as Councilmember Korn, uh, just told you, uh, we've been approached by both the county and Main Street Roswell, asking to, uh, transfer that project to the county and let, allow the county to become their fiscal agent of those funding sources, of that funding source. I would just say that, uh, Main Street, uh, New Mexico Main Street is very supportive of this move, not only to transfer the fiscal agent to the county, but to transfer the location. I think, uh, everybody, uh, may or may not be, uh, familiar with the site, the old site, east of Virginia Street, west of the railway between First and Second Streets, and directly adjacent to, uh, uh, XL Transformers and potential contamination plumes. Uh, the new site is east of Virginia Street, west of Railway, uh, between Fourth and Fifth Streets, and directly adjacent to the current county courthouse parking lot. And again, the county would assume fiscal agent and matching and, uh, restroom operations. And, uh, again, this project, uh, was envisioned as a community market beautification of the space and, uh, event space for city and county.
Thank you. Anyone care to speak in favor of this?
I do, Mayor.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
So, I just want, I just want to say, I've been involved with this from day one. I was on Main Street border when we, we, uh, started the grant, and I think the new location is a much better location than the original location picked, so I think it's a great idea. I yield.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, uh, on a motion by Councilman Korn, a second by Council Lady Arnold, Resolution, uh, a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-eight, uh, supporting the City of Roswell's transfer of the Great Blocks Main Street Grant Program to Chavas County. If the clerk will call the roll.
Council Hildebrand?
Aye.
Council Orobesa?
Yes.
Council Perry?
Aye.
Council Korn?
Yes.
Council Moore?
Yes.
Council Halverson?
Yes.
Council Sanchez?
Yes.
Council Best? Council Arnold?
Yes.
By a vote of nine in the affirmative, none in the negative, Resolution dash, uh, twenty-three dash twenty-eight has passed. Next, we have item thirty-one. It's a resolution to consider advertising for a public hearing to consider adopting ordinance twenty-three dash ten, adopting a municipal grocery leads tax. Councilman Hildebrand?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we consider authorizing to advertise a public hearing to consider adopting ordinance twenty-three dash ten, which is adopting a municipal grocery receipts tax. Uh, just for edification purposes, this was, uh, a move to fund, uh, the ambulance service for public safety for this community.
Yeah, well, motion by Councilman Hildebrand, the second by Council Lady Arnold.
Mr. Mayor, Council Hildebrand.
Yes, okay, and so, uh, Mr. Ryan Tummo.
Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, so this is a, this would be a new GRT that would increase, uh, the tax by point three, one, two, five percent. Uh, the tax i- in this ordinance has significant restrictions on the use of the funds raised, and it follows a tiered system. The first tier must be completed before the second one gets activated and so on. So, tier one is to provide for an ambulance system in good repair and to pay legitimate expenses of operation. Two would be to pay interest on bonds for the purpose of acquiring, repairing, improving, or enlarging the ambulance system. Three would be to pay the cost of improving and extending the ambulance system and the redemption of revenue bonds prior to their maturity. Always good to pay back debt early if you can. And four, um, very importantly, is to create a reasonable reserve fund, which would be no less than five million dollars or two times the system's losses for the previous year, whichever is greater. Then and only then would any money from this tax be able to go to the general fund. The reason that five million was chosen, that we could, I'm not an expert on this. The reason that we're doing it with this timeline is, first, as you're aware, uh, we were gonna get, we're gonna get hit with a significantly increased ambulance bill this year. It's gonna go up from a hundred thirty, a hundred fifty K-ish to one and a half million-ish. That's simply a hit the city long-term can't be taking, and there's no promise that this price will not go up. The better method in this administration's view is to go in-house. That said, this is a massive tax increase, and you guys need more information. With that in mind, uh, you should have received notice today that there would be a special city council meeting where the fire department and ma- and the administration will be presenting exactly how this would be rolled out so that you could make a, an informed decision at public hearing. Importantly, too, the public is invited, of course, to the, the meeting next week. I'm happy to privately meet with you to discuss, uh, this as well and some legal implications that might occur, uh, in a more privileged setting. So, what we request now is simply that this be voted on so that we can have a public hearing. As noted in the abstract, the reason we're doing it this way is because if we don't pass this by s- our August meeting, uh, we wouldn't be able to collect tax revenue until next fiscal year, which would put off getting an ambulance system in place by six months at least. Given the high dollar amount that we're, so right there, we're talking about eight hundred thousand and more expenses to the city that will be given to an out-of-state for-profit corporation to give us medical service, which, you know, they provide very good service, don't get me wrong, but it, we need to think carefully about whether we continue on that road. Thank you.
The special meeting will be on June the fifteenth? At four o'clock, as I recall.
Yes, the fifteenth, in one week.
Okay, just for your information. Council Lady Best?
So, let me, let me understand this. This special meeting is a workshop. Is, is that correct? Because we used to have a definition between special meeting and workshop.
Uh, this will actually have both. There's one item that will be also on the agenda. Uh, so there'll be a one, one item that would be a actual vote, and then the rest would be workshop.
Okay.
It, that, that item's unrelated to this. It's to get a plat through that.
Well, I, I understand it's unrelated, but to make a management decision on this, I need a workshop to make sure that the plan in my mind is gonna go through, so.
Yeah, that, that would be next Thursday.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Counselman Perry, is that you?
Yes, sir, it is. Uh, I just, um, I need to understand, this taxation consideration is to take care of this ambulance service, correct?
That is correct.
Correct.
And there's no sunset or anything that we're considering?
Uh, I'll, you can amend, uh, Counselor Perry, feel free to add amendments as necessary. Uh, generally speaking, uh, based on my current understanding, I don't advise a pure sunset because, sounds like you're having more fun than we are out there. I don't advise a pure sunset because ambulance services run at a loss. So the city will, e- even if, even if we collected sixty percent on insurance claims, which would be pretty amazing, we're gonna lose money on this. I mean, the public health is a, as we noted earlier for other things, is a, is not a winner financially. So, I, I think, and based on how Thursday goes, you might have a better idea of how you would like to sunset certain provisions, if at all.
Well, I, I have some concerns with the projections so far. Uh, it looks like we would, I don't know, how did we come to the determination on these projections?
The finance gave us these, and these also match, uh, what was recently provided to us by an outside consultant regarding GRT. We can, we can get you firmer projections, like, this was a, a, a general abstract for the purposes of getting a public hearing. A lot more answers will be coming at the workshop.
I guess, I, I just feel like, uh, uh, i- in no disrespect to anyone, but I feel like I'm being forced to put the cart before the horse here by making a vote to move to have a public hearing wi- without the workshop. It seems like the logical thing would be to have the workshop, to have all the facts and the facts binding presented to us, so we can determine if we want that even as a consideration.
Counsel Perry, man, I believe that this authorizes us to advertise to have the public hearing for the adort, uh, yes, it is beforehand, but that's, we will get to the public hearing. Because of the short timeframe, we have, uh, we don't wanna miss this and, and be without ambulance service.
So, it, with all due respect, um, you know, I, I appreciate the education on that, but I think I, you know, I, I'm aware that this is just to advertise for public hearing. The fact is, is that we didn't find out about this ambulance service problem, uh, three days ago, which is what's required to do, um, advertisement for, 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 for a meeting. We've known about this for quite a long time, and now I'm being asked, uh, to push forward something, uh, and then, uh, uh, wait and get the facts on Thursday, but it seems like we could have a workshop with a special meeting directly after to determine whether or not we want to have a public hearing.
Uh, there, yes, we did find out about this earlier. There have been a number of people in the fire department and working with AMR and other people, other agencies, trying to figure out a proposed solution to where we go with this. Uh, a lot of our own staff was doing it, and we had, they had outside consultants as well as was, was my understanding. So, people have been working on it, maybe it might not, uh, uh, be exactly the way you would've done it, but our staff, uh, was the option that our staff chose on how to try to solve this problem, and, uh, and there are paid staff, so that's where we are.
But, I, I recognize that, Mr. Mayor, but, but it doesn't make sense to anyone else to have the workshop, to gain the education of the information, and then to make a vote to send to a, you could do the very exact same thing, this coming Thursday. It won't take staff an extra fifteen minutes to add to the calendar, uh, that directly after the workshop, there'd be a special city council meeting, and you would still be able to have the proper, uh, accommodations to still have the next city council meeting, have your, your public, uh, uh, your vote and your public comments to be made.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Next we have Councilman Korn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Yatima, let me, let me see if I understand. You, you can sit there. Oh, you'd rather stand?
For you, I'll stand, Counsel.
Okay, well, we'll see if you can think on your feet.
Oh, boy.
All right, um, couple of things. As I understand the way this works, after we pass a tax increase, this one or any other tax, grocery receipts tax increase, then we have a period of, if I remember correctly, ninety days before the tax is imposed. Is that correct?
Yeah, so, I spoke with tax and revenue to double-check all this. They would start imposing the tax January one, if we impose it between now and September, and then we would start seeing this sometime after March, prob- mid-March or April.
Okay. So if, if, and it's reported here that we're looking at, um, one point five million dollars of increased or generated revenue, correct?
Assuming there's no recession, yeah.
Well, I mean, you're crystal ball, mine's both broke. I've been around you enough to know that. Um, so, we're gonna get, we're gonna start getting any, if, let's assume for a moment that this goes forward, we have a nice meeting, uh, workshop, and then we'll come back to full city council a month from now, and we enact this, and so we can't start collect, we can't start charging people till January, because the state, that's the state way they do business, and we're not gonna receive a check till March. So, we're gonna have half a year of revenue, which is, what, a hundred and seven, seven hundred and fifty thousand, give or take? No, that's too much. Six hundred and fifty thousand.
We'll have four to five months of revenue.
Right.
For the fiscal.
Okay, to cover a bill that, when we first started down this track, we thought was gonna be two point six million dollars. Is that right, Mr. Matthews? Is that the letter that you got? Six point, two point six. That was when we said, oh my gosh, and we went to work, or you went to work. I just knew about it, you showed me the letter, correct? Okay. So, we do all of that, and so we're gonna take it out of hide, so to speak. We're gonna cover, uh, we, we authorized, this, this governing body authorized, what was it, one point four? You have to get a contract with AMR for one point four or less.
And that's, that's on the agenda tonight, yes, sir, last item.
Okay. So I'm just, I'm getting old, I don't know if I can remember all this stuff or not. But anyway, so, we're gonna have an additional one point four million dollars, let's say, um, cause they already know what we're authorized. They, they're not gonna come off of that figure very far. If I was negotiating on their team, they wouldn't come off. Um, and so, we're gonna take one point four out of hide for this fiscal year coming up, FY twenty-four, and under the best of circumstances, we'll collect six hundred and fifty thousand to offset that, so we're still in the hole, a bunch from a hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Yes.
So we can't, we can't get from here to anywhere, in my opinion, without some increase. Let's talk about that a little bit. So, if my memory serves me correctly, July first, grocery receipts in Roswell, and the state of New Mexico's gonna go down. Is that correct, Mr. Yatima?
That's my understanding.
And so we're gonna impose this point three, one, two, five in January, and that'll probably get it up just a little bit in January from what they're paying right now.
Uh, yes, sir. I believe the change, the net change to the taxpayer would be one tenth of one percent, or a little less.
Point one tenth of one percent.
Yeah, so point, yeah, point one.
Point one.
Yeah.
So the actual burden to what they're used to paying now, they'll have a little holiday for six months, and then we'll get it kicked off, so we've got enough revenue in FY twenty-five to almost pay the one point four, because you're gonna enter into a multi-year contract. Is that my understanding? Two-year contract?
Sir.
So whatever else we do is gonna be a long time down the road, because we're not gonna have any money left over. Cause we're gonna enter into multiple-year contracts of one point four, and when this is fully implemented and in place, we're just gonna have a hundred and twenty-five, million twenty-five. Uh-oh, got you up. You got a piece of paper in your hand. That may have gone too far.
Yes, sir, and, and just by comparison, uh, that would put us, uh, seven point eight nine five eight. Um, looking at Las Cruces is currently at eight point zero six two five. Uh, Clovis is at seven point nine three seven five.
Okay. So we're still in the ballgame. We're not overtaxing anybody. We're doing what other communities, Las Cruces is probably not a fair assessment.
Beyond that six-month period, essentially flat.
Okay, all right. So, those are all worthy points. I'm not sure this is gonna get us where we wanna go, because we're not covering the contract expenses with this revenue if we enact it. So I don't know how we can go on and spend five million bucks, or four million bucks, or whatever it is, to buy our own equipment. I don't know. We'll have to figure that out. I mean, we're not getting out of this scot-free. That's my bottom line. It, even if we enact this, we're still in the hole. Even if you take the one twenty-five and add the hundred and sixty-five thousand we're used to paying, we're still behind.
Yes, sir. That's right.
So we're in a tight spot.
We're, we're in a tight spot, and, uh, essentially, we are at AMR's mercy, um, as are many communities throughout New Mexico, and quite frankly, throughout the nation. Um, you know, we, we're fortunate, uh, that our local AMR staff is good, they're solid. We have a great work, working relationship, uh, with them, and we like the, the service product, uh, that they give to our community. We're not as thrilled, uh, with the corporate-level decisions, and, uh, when we talk about, uh, that, uh, final thing on our agenda, uh, to contract with AMR, uh, that's another piece of this puzzle, uh, but absolutely, we're at, we are essentially at their mercy right now, uh, knowing that I think in January or, or February thereabouts, uh, of twenty twenty-three, AMR came in and said, uh, surprise, uh, we'd like to take our annual contract amount with the city of Roswell from one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars per year, uh, to two point six million per year. At that point, and as you know, uh, we turned right around and issued an RFP for ambulance services, uh, received, uh, bids on that, um, AMR's was a proposal. Again, uh, we like the service, we, we like the product that we have here, and that's the main thing for our community, and I think everybody can agree on that. We want to have solid ambulance service here in Roswell. Um, you've said it, uh, many others have said it as well, uh, when you need it, you need it, and you want the best that you can get in terms of that, and, uh, um, so that's what this is all about.
Yeah, I hope I don't ever need them, but when you need them, you need them, and you need them right now.
Right.
And you need people that can assess the situation and do whatever needs to be done.
Yes, sir.
To get you safely, hopefully, to the hospital. And then the other part of this that people don't think about is that our hospital, our hospitals transfer lots of people every day to Lubbock, Albuquerque, and El Paso, and other places.
I think the estimate was eighty per month.
How many?
Eighty per month, my understanding.
Well, that's, uh, getting close to three a day. That's a lot of folks that, for whatever reason, they can't take care of here. Um, so, like you say, we're, we're in a spot, and I don't see many options. I'm sorry. And, you know, we're gonna have a full-blown workshop on this thing, and we're gonna listen to the proposal that the fire department has put together. I've seen parts of it.
They've done an outstanding job with it.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I think they did a heck of a job, what I saw. I think they worked their tail off, and I think that they tried to cover all the bases, but it's like everything, you know? Once you get started down the road, nobody wants a flat tire, but that's the first thing that happens if you remember to put gas in the tank before you left town.
Yes, sir.
So this is a serious deal, and, and I think that we need to go ahead and get this advertised properly, have our workshop, allow the public to come in, and then have another meeting that the public is more than welcome to come in, and the mayor is over-generous with his opportunity for the public to speak, and that's not a bad thing, that's just the way it is. Um, and so, I think we need to, to get on with it. It may not be the order everybody would like, but we got some tight timeframes here that we gotta deal with, and so we gotta get started somewhere, and this will expedite the process, I hope. Of course, we could send it back to legal three or four times. You don't have, you don't have enough to do, Mr. Chairman. But anyway, Mr. Mayor, I think I've made several points, I've got some more to make at, at a later time. Thank you all for your help. I yield.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, on a motion by Councilman Hildebrand, seconded by Councilman Arnold, uh, for ordinance twenty-three dash ten to consider authorizing, authorizing to advertise for a public hearing to consider adopting ordinance twenty-three dash ten, municipal grocery receipts tax, uh, for our ambulance service, uh, if the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Hildebrand?
Aye.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
No, without explanation.
Counselor Korn?
Do you want my vote? Yes.
Counselor Moore? Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Best? Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
By a vote of six in the affirmative, three in the negative, uh, item twenty-three dash ten has passed the body. Next we go to...
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Jason. Goes to Councilman Perry, go ahead.
Hi. I'm sorry to be such a thorn in your flesh tonight, but, uh, I'm still, still at it. Um, I'd just like to request the data, uh, that has been cited tonight, uh, to be provided to all of us in advance before this meeting on Thursday, uh, concerning all the figures that have been thrown out there, how much this is gonna generate, and also where that information has been, uh, determined from.
Okay. Your staff will take note. Okay, next we have item thirty-two. This is to consider the approval of the recommendation of the mayor for appointment to the E C Z, ETZ, Eddie Correo, uh, for a partial term beginning in the eighth of June and go to the, to March, uh, thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. And Councilman Arnold?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve your recommendation of appointment to the ETZ Commission as follows. Position one... Position one, Eddie Correo, partial term June eighth, twenty twenty-three through March thirty-first of twenty twenty-four.
We have a motion by Councilman Arnold, second by Councilman Corn. Is there any discussion? Mr. Correo, he's been in Roswell a long time, and he also, he's done some work for, uh, La Casa de Buenos Salud. Earlier in his life, he worked for, uh, I believe he worked for, uh, Tuning Footwear, and he's been around for a while, and he, he's very in tune with, uh, what goes on with our community. Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, item thirty-two, uh, on a motion by Councilman Corn, second, excuse me, Council Lady Arnold, second by Counselor Corn. This would be to recommend to the, or to confirm the appointment of Eddie Correo to the, uh, E T Z, uh, Commission. All those in, oh, wait, we have to have a roll call. The clerk could call the roll.
Counselor Haldenbrand? Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Moore? Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Best? Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
By a vote of eight in the infirmary and none in the negative, I, uh, Mr. Correo has been confirmed to the E T Z Commission. Next, we have item thirty-three. It's considered the approval of the purchase twelve additional body cameras and thirty-four additional users licenses, thirty-three tasers, additional taser devices for the Roswell Police Department, and consolidate the two contracts into one. Counsel Lady Halverson, do you?
So may I make a motion to consider approval to purchase twelve additional body cameras, thirty-four additional user licenses, thirty-three additional tasers, seven devices for the Roswell Police Department, consolidating the two current contracts with the additional items for one complete contract?
We have a motion by Counsel Lady Halverson, second by Councilman Corn, to complete the purchase of these, of the body cameras on item thirty-three in the, this thirty-four additional users license and the tasers for the Roswell Police Department, and to consolidate their contracts into one. Is there any further discussion? Any question? Excuse me, go ahead. Would you like to?
I'll be brief, your honor. Real quickly, we have currently ninety-five tasers with the expected, uh, fully staffed of being at a hundred and four. We need to purchase more tasers. The other, uh, major implication that we're trying to do is change where we currently store our evidence, digital evidence. We do it on a standalone server, which works, but is not the ideal way to do it. By purchasing these unlimited licenses, we will be able to upload all crime scene photos, all digital evidence to one secure location along with the body cameras that will give the city, legal department, the district attorney's office, and anyone else that has a proper access, immediate access to them once they're uploaded. Currently, we have the two contracts, which has, uh, two different pay dates, two different warranty dates, and two different refresh dates. The way the Axon tasers work is it's a five-year contract. At two and a half years, Axon will send us all brand-new body camera and no additional charge, and we send back the ones that we are no longer using. With that, we'll have three different refresh dates, which we would then have to track which ones we need to send back. The way that the consolidated contract would work was they would extend the warranty of the current body cameras that we are using to cover the gap up to the two-and-a-half-year mark from when we sign the new contract.
Thank you. Counsel Lady Moore?
The funding for this has already been allocated?
Yes, we would use it with the, or we would cover it with the law enforcement protection grant, which is expected to go up, and we do not see any other adjustments or need for budget.
How many officers did you say you already had?
Currently, today, we're at ninety-one. Uh, I know we're slotted for a hundred and four. So hoping that we get to that number, we have to have these body cameras for every person from the day they start.
And what is, what consolidating the contract, what did you say that did? I missed on, I didn't hear what you said. Consolidating the contract, what does that do?
It would do a couple of things. It would alleviate having three separate payments. Currently, because we have three separate contracts, we have to make three separate payments on three separate days of three separate amounts. The warranty would change as well, and we are actually saving money by consolidating the contracts. We were able to evaluate the contracts and remove some parts that we didn't like, that we would not be able to do if we did three separate contracts. But because we were reworking it, we were able to eliminate some of the things that we didn't think were necessary anymore and would actually save us over the life of the contracts.
Thank you, I yield.
Thank you. Is there any further comments? Seeing none. Okay, item twenty-three, out on a motion by Counsel Lady Halverson, second by Councilman Corn for the approval of twelve additional body cameras, thirty-four user licenses, thirty-three additional tasers, seven devices for the Roswell Police Department, and to complete, it would also consolidate the contracts into one contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I would assume that would be a by, by a vote of eight in the infirmary and none in the negative. Uh, item thirty-four has pa, or excuse me, item thirty-three has passed, uh, the council.
I don't know that we heard Counselor Sanchez.
Uh, Counselor Sanchez, would you like to vote yes on this, or did you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, there we go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, thank you, Officer Fry. Okay, next, we have item thirty-four. It's a, item to consider the purchase of a Cobus four-hundred series pipe puller and related accessories from Cobus of Pasadena, Texas, in the amount of seventy-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars. This is approval would be pending approval for New Mexico for a sole-source determination from the state. Councilman Corn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve the purchase of a Cobus, Cobus, Cobus four-hundred series pipe puller. I'll yield to my good friend, Mr. Glenn, when it's appropriate to explain the process. And this is pending, uh, state of New Mexico approval, so.
So we?
We've got seventy-three, one hundred and ninety-five thousand set aside for this, waiting for that official okey-dokey.
We have a motion by Councilman Corn, a second by Councilman Arnold. Is there, uh, Mr. Glenn?
So this would be used, the next, actually, the next three items are going to be used for our lead service line inventory program that the EPA has mandated to us. Uh, this is a new technology that you can, it's a trenchless puller. Instead of having to do an open trench across the street or anything like that, you run a, a cable through, attach your new pipe on the other side, and then pull it back through, and it spools it up on there. Supposed to be a cute little video. I, Counselor Corn wanted me to dance for you and everything, because it's got cool music, but we'll, we'll not do that.
Well, you all can dance afterwards.
Okay. And this is a sole source. There is, this is the only company that actually manufactures anything like this. We have checked with a contractor up in the Denver area that is doing work for Denver Water. He has five of them and loves them.
Okay. Any questions for item thirty-four? Seeing none on such stellar notice and debate, well, we would, uh, we have a motion to approve, item thirty-four, which is the purchase of a Cobus four-hundred series pipe puller and related accessories in, uh, from Cobus Incorporated in Pasadena, Texas, subject to the approval of the state of New Mexico for a sole source determination from the state. Okay, if, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that would be, we decide. Nine in the infirmary, none in the negative. Item thirty-four is duly passed. Okay, next, we have item thirty-five, which is consider the approval of a Topcon Hyper V, VR Network Rover System and related sec, accessories from GeoShack, in the amount of twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty cents. Counselor McCorn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move we approve the purchase of the Topcon Hyper VR Network Rover System and all the related accessories, and I hope we get a second. And I'm going to yield to Mr. Glenn, if that's all right. This is a complicated kind of deal, because it's a mandate coming down from the EPA, so.
Yep.
Mr. Glenn?
So this is what we would use to do the mapping of the, the service lines, and it'll work with our current G I S system, and we'll just continue doing stuff with it.
Okay. Is there any further comments? This will allow them to put the mappings, all the mappings of all the lines of all the, that they deal with all the time, or put it on a map so they can find them and...
Mr. Mayor, another way that this piece of equipment can be used is to map out where we're having problem areas, so we can put together a plan to actually go in there and make a decision if we need to replace a section, a whole section of line, instead of just keeping, patching what we've got. So I think this tool will be overutilized when we first get it.
We'll be using it as part of the asset management system.
We'll even notice, notify you when you cycle valves and things to keep them functioning.
We have one already that we're using for that.
Okay, thank you. Representative Arnold, or Counsel Lady Arnold?
So just a quick, quick, um, question. Could this actually be used in correlation with the customer service portal for the community development as we're doing GPS? And, and actually lining out where our lines are and not to dig? I didn't know if there was any way this could be connected, and that's just a, a thing I'm actually asking for something to be considered, because if we're developing it and we have the system, maybe we can actually cross-reference.
Counselor Corn, mayor, commi, uh, counselors, your question is exactly what we're doing with G I S. So some of the data that they'll be gathering will also be incorporated in. As we put this stuff open to the public, we want to give them a general location, but we have to be careful as how much information we give them. We want to give them information that they can do economic development planning, but then they'll still have to hire engineers to do the precise work. Also, we have that home loan security issues that we have to be careful with, what we put on the website.
Thank you very much. That's what I was hoping.
And this, we will be using this to map the service lines all the way up to their houses. So that'll help the residents a lot, too.
Any further comments? Seeing none on a motion of, uh, Councilman Corn, second by Counsel Lady Arnold? Uh, to, for the approval of, to purchase a Topcon IP, Hyper VR Network Rover System and related accessories from GeoShack, the amount of twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty cents. If, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 I think I heard everybody then, so it was by a vote of nine in the infirmary and none in the negative. Uh, item thirty-five, we have agreed to purchase, item thirty-five, the Topcon Hy, Hyper VR Network Rover System and accessories. Okay, next, we have, uh, item thirty-six. It's to consider the approval of the purchase of an ElectroScan Swordfish Lead Detection Tool from Ferguson Waterworks for seventy-eight thousand dollars. The approval would be pending the approval of, of, from the state for a sole service, sole source determination from state purchasing agent. Counselor McCorn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we, um, approve the purchase of ElectroScan Swordfish Lead Detection Tool.
Okay, we have a motion, Councilman Corn, a second by Counsel Lady Arnold. Mr. Glenn?
So the way this works is we would, uh, you actually go pull the water meter, and you run this detection tool in, down through the line, back to the, the water main, and then from the meter to the foundation of the house, and it tells us through a electric resistance what the line is made out of.
Yes, whether it's made out of copper or...
Copper, plastic, yeah.
Lead or whatever.
And it, it saves us from having to go through and pothole every ten feet and look at the line itself. This is approved, it's an approved method by the EPA, and we have a, a standard on how to do it through American Waterworks Association.
So any further questions? Seeing none, we have on a motion by Councilman McCorn, second by Counsel Lady Arnold, to approve item thirty-six, which is the purchase of an ElectroScan Swordfish Lead Detection Tool from Ferguson Waterworks for seventy-eight thousand dollars pending, uh, approval for a sole source determination from the state purchasing agent. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? By a vote of nine in the infirmary and none in the negative, that item is, item thirty-six, the purchase of the ElectroScan Swordfish Lead Detection Tool from Ferguson Waterworks has been approved. Next, we have item, uh, thirty-seven. Okay. Item thirty-seven is to consider the approval of the warehouse inventory purchasing authorization, uh, request. Counselor McCorn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move we approve the warehouse inventory purchasing authorization request.
We have a motion by Councilman Corn, second by Counselor Arnold, to, uh, purchase the, or to approve the warehouse inventory purchasing agent. Mr. Glenn, would you care to?
This is a reauthorization from, uh, something that we started last year. This authorizes us to, to spend up to those amounts with those specific vendors. These are, this is a not-to-exceed amount. It gives the warehouse staff the ability to buy stuff a little bit quicker, especially when we get sales, and a lot of times, we'll have the vendor call and say, hey, so-and-so didn't take things, and it's something that we need, and we can purchase it. Uh, we did this last year. Worked out very well. Typically, on a purchase order, you have a, a three-step approval. With purchase orders under this authorization, it would actually be a four-step approval, where, uh, Janie Davies would be the final check and balance on stuff to make sure that we're, we're right where we're supposed to be. Uh, these are the numbers from what we've purchased the last couple of years. This authorization is actually less than what we asked for last year.
Okay. So this would allow you to fill up your warehouse, and so we have plenty of thirty-six-inch valves if you need them.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor McCorn?
I happened to go by the warehouse several weeks ago, and I was genu, genuinely impressed with the way it's organized, and it's all, all the pieces are where they're supposed to be. I've got some pieces and parts around there. I don't know what they're going to do with, because nobody uses them that much anymore. I've got some galvanized fittings. Maybe you need some for the ranch, mayor. Maybe they'll make you a sweetheart deal, but I don't know. But anyway, if you have a chance... But anyway, if you have a chance, go buy their shop over on Walnut. I was, I was very, very impressed.
We have a wonderful warehouse staff that does an exceptional job of what they do. And they, they put our vendors through the bases to get the best pricing on stuff. They have no problems going onto Amazon and checking prices, and then going back to the vendor and say, hey, I can get it here for this. You know, beat that price. And they do that constantly.
Is there any further discussion seeing none? If the clerk would call the roll to consider approval of the warehouse inventory purchasing authorization request. Just, excuse me, just, clerk, if you just do a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and then opposed, none. By a vote of nine in the firm, we've done the negative. Item thirty-seven has passed. You've got your inventory purchasing request. Next, we have item thirty-eight. Consider the approval of the ITB twenty-three dash twenty-four replacement hole bars and surface painted hold signs, enhancement markings on taxiways GHMBFED to Maxwell Asphalt in the amount of seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and nineteen cents, which includes grocery receipts tags. Okay, now we have Counselman McCorn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move we approve award ITB twenty-three zero twenty-four. Do a lot of badly needed painting at the airport. FAA was just here, and they were able to show them that we've got this stuff in the pipeline, and so they thought that was great. And I hope I get a second.
Second.
Okay, we have on a motion, Counselman McCorn, and second by Counsel Lady Moore, to approve the approval of the ITB award of twenty-three dash twenty-four to replace hole bars and paint taxiways and improvements at the airport. Yes, Ms. Griegego.
Mayor and Counselors, I'm here to ask you to consider the approval to award ITB twenty-three zero two four, replacing the hole bars and surface painted hold signs, enhanced markings on taxiways Gulf Holt Hotel, Mike Bravo, Foxstraw Echo and Delta to Maxwell Asphalt in the amount of seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and ninety cents, which includes GTR. The present markings that are on the runways and taxiways now are, have been there for seven years, so they are losing the reflectivity. So we are mandated to get some new ones. These will hold up longer than the paint, which is why we went with the thermoplastic.
Thank you, Ms. Griegego. Are there any questions to Ms. Griegego on her reflectivity and that of her signs? Okay, seeing none. If the clerk would, you know, we'll just do a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, like sign. Seeing none, by a vote of nine in the firm, none in the negative. Item thirty-eight, the approval of the award of ITB twenty-three dash zero two four to replace and paint and improve it, markings in the taxiways at the airport, has been approved.
Thank you. Excuse me. Counselor Perry, did you vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Well, I could hear you. Okay, next, we have item thirty-nine. authorized there, the manager to enter a contract with AMR for not more than one-point-four million. Counselman McCorn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move we authorize the city manager, Mr. Cole, entering a contract with AMR, and we're set in the market right now, no more than one-point-four million dollars.
Second. Okay, on a motion by Counselman McCorn, second by Counselman Hildebrand, to approve for, authorize a manager to enter a contract with AMR for not more than one-point-four million dollars. Okay, Mr. Cole.
Yes, sir. Mayor Jennings, members of the council, just to reiterate, back in January, February, two thousand and twenty-three, AMR contract, annual contract with the city was one-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars. They sprung a surprise on us and amended that to two-point-six million dollars annually. The city of Roswell, at that point, issued an RFP, request for proposals, received those requests for proposals back. That would have been about March timeframe. The proposal that was awarded by this council was to AMR for two-point-four million dollars. That was a proposal for eight ambulances and one-hundred-and-twenty unit hours. Also included in that RFP proposal of AMR's was an option for one-point-four-nine million dollars with seven ambulances and one-eight, one-hundred-and-eight units, hours of service. Again, for one-point-four-nine million in negotiations. You'll note that the city did propose an offer to allow AMR to use two of our fire substations for their personnel for a cost savings, and also proposed to allow AMR to use our PVRCC to provide all dispatching services, again, for a cost savings that I won't disclose here, but that would put us below the one-point-four-nine million. So we do feel confident in you giving us the authority to move forward at one-point-four million dollars. Yes, sir.
Are there any, any questions of Mr. Cole about our AMR contract? Any more questions? Any comments? Seeing none. All, okay. We have a voice vote, please, on item thirty-nine, authorizing the manager into a contract with AMR for no more than one-point-four million dollars for services. All those, or let's see. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? By a vote of nine in the firm, we've done the negative. They've been passed. Next, we have.
Aye.
Oh, thank you, Savino.
Thank you.
We have department reports. If the police chief is asleep back there, if he would, do you have anything you would like to give us on your department report, since this is your first day in the barrel? First council meeting.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Sorry, I was trying to catch a little nap back there, but I don't have much to say tonight. Like everyone knows, I started last Friday, so I'm in my fifth day, trying to get going, learning all the, the city sources and computer systems and everything. I can't tell you right now, our department has ninety-one, or ninety officers, actually. After July, we'll be manned for a hundred and four with five new additional positions. And we do have, we are hoping to start five more on the department between now and the end of July. They will start their pre-training positions, and I'm not sure when they'll start the academy, but they'll go through an FTO phase and then go into the next academy. So we're hoping at that time will be in the mid-nineties. That's where we are right now. Any questions from the councilor, Mayor?
Thank you. Any questions of anybody? I'm just kind of curious, when your daughter goes, hey, chief, who responds in your household?
Not me. I know, I know my place, so.
All right.
My daughter doesn't even come close to calling us that. She calls us other stuff a lot worse.
All right, thank you. Thank you for being here. Sorry we kept you up so late, but get used to it. Next, we have department reports. Does anybody care to make a report? Just trying to, how's your legal department?
Almost adequate.
Okay. Any boards and commissions care to have a report? Anyone else care to say anything?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh.
Just for the public information, and it'll be put out, the General Services will not be meeting this month.
Okay. Thank you very much. You know, on behalf of, I think, the people of Roswell, thank you all, the staff, thank all of you all for being here, councilmen. Thank you all very much for being here, and all those on the phone. Thank you for being here.
Revo.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Yes.
Savino and everybody. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Return.